Here. Calling this workshop for the Board of Trustees. Door. Welcome, everyone. I don't even have. Computer, just. Whoa. Well. Manager Kudron is, will be joining us here shortly. Tonight on the agenda. Did we have, which one was the first one?
The Grand Lake Center.
Thank you, yes. And I don't know if. Yeah, Mr. Jones won't get that, or if somebody is going to come. Give me just a second.
Want to give it, give it a try?
It's doing well.
Easy. No, you're fine. Feel like you're something. Are you? Is anyone coming?
Oh, she asked, um, I asked if she wanted to be here and she said, space for example.
Okay. Manager Kudron will be right with this and he'll be giving the update for. My passions. I'm so glad these have, these have held so well. It was a great idea, wasn't convinced solely that anyone would actually be a mentee person, but uh.
Under what Steve budget in the roof?
Yeah.
There's a phone ringing in the room.
We're just waiting on you, Steve. I've already opened. That's my bad, I should've. But I'm worried the crowd's getting restless.
Looking forward to it. Is Jim, is Jim showing up to be back or not?
Jim is not going to be back. Um, we'll be excusing him at regular meeting. He was passed away. It's impossible not to drink.
Maybe.
For him.
You have enough of the bathroom, Brad.
So it's a place more. You know, those are some smokes. Yeah. And Mrs. Brady, well, you said.
You're ready? Okay. You're on for the Grand Lake Center.
Trustees, thank you very much. What you have before you is the report. By the Grand Lake Center, this was made available two weeks ago and two days. So we weren't able to have it on the back end. It's Crystal's intention to be able to do this. On a monthly basis. One of the things that she wanted to point out was as Picklaw has gotten started. And being able to use the Gym Master system, it makes it. Easy for to make sure that everybody that walks in the door is being asked for their membership or payment. Do you have any questions about the numbers? You can see that an awful lot of them. The silver sneakers, you know, we get three dollars apiece.
I'm sorry, I don't want to sound outrageous, but where, where do we live from?
Edge three.
Okay, we're in the back.
Is the system spitting out these numbers, or does she need to go and do some crunching?
It is a little bit of both. Mostly the system is spitting these numbers out now. This is the first time that. She has worked with these numbers to get them, to get the outputs out of Gym Master. As you might recall, the first couple of months. We had a real hard time just even getting the writing on people that continue to stay open into through September.
What are these total check-ins? Just those card buzzes?
So either at the door or opening the door.
Isn't it only the entrance door that's like left open here?
Um, as they come by. If somebody at the desk is asking for everybody to swipe it.
If somebody's at the desk, it gets.
Which is not, they've not made a link to ask everybody walking in the door.
They have?
Have not, until the last month and a half.
Do they have a? Check-in on the bus, actually. When you go to check in, this will comes up and get checked in and then. Scanner.
So one of the things she said that um, the November's report's going to be even better. Because they're getting all the Picklers in the system as well as the re, the renew active people. She said she's added at least 50 members since the beginning of the month. And she's making sure that everyone checks in every single day.
Okay, cool.
Of course.
With an email of a 50.
And that silver sneakers is three dollars a month, is that what I understood?
We get three dollars at a time.
At a time.
So every time they swipe. So that differentiator, it was three dollars on five. I haven't asked Crystal, but I will to see if that changes now that we're raising our drop in rates. In addition to these two documents. Including waived fees of non-paid tenants. She gave me the list of fees to be changed, which we'll talk about later in the food.
Is this wage fees? Then document a culmination of the whole year or just?
These are the. The ones that have been. That are regularly done each. These are the way fees that have come to us, yes, to the board.
To the board?
Yeah.
All right.
Or done by policy, right?
Is this report supposed to provide anything for the budget for us, or just kind of?
No, we, um, this was really an overview of use and utilization. She, what, she's appreciative of what we kept in the budget, so the floor, the 10,000 for the backboard. And um. That was one of our.
One, two.
Yes, we're gonna do some more research, but the lighting.
Lighting the backboards.
But the backboard's not the whole lift up, there's.
The brandy come and do another quote.
We're getting him, he hasn't done yet, he's going to. Yeah, he's gone to a six. This isn't a bad thing, because we'll have heaters and the lights will turn up on.
The sneakers still on this morning, so.
The photo is.
Twenty-four seven.
Any questions about those numbers?
You intend for us to see these monthly and current?
It'll be going to get them to you by the first meeting, not this second. Like I said, she was two days from getting it down the first one.
Have you started a dialogue with Bill Park Health as well?
No, no, yeah. The lease is up. I did check that.
Like that's up at the end of the last year, right?
There are, there are several items in the lease that haven't been addressed over the years, so there's a lot of opportunities.
Alright, so the, on the wage fees, the rental cost here is 13,000 would be what we're taking at a loss right now, is that what I understand?
Correct. That's revenue we could have collected if hadn't.
And you said we did come to a consensus on. Those improvements?
Yes.
What did you decide?
You come back to.
I thought you were asking for some clarification, some more research on, and then one of them you.
They were cut back, so the 60,000 was, they came back with. The product that we had agreed on, I. She could have answered that question. It um. It wasn't a liquid pour, it was the laminate, the sports surface. There was a quote in one of the workshops for the sports surface that would go down. They're not tiles, but it's like a rope. And then the two backboards, the $10,000 was a number that came from the discussion because the quote was substantially more. And um, we figured that that was more. Than it should cost to be able to get, to get two boards installed.
Yeah, because I think half of that was.
Using the frame, the frame, the electric, all that stuff, and we decided that those things only go up twice a year anyway, so. We can figure out a way to do that than spending another $30,000. And then, yes, the lights. There was more.
You mentioned floor, or just back in the gymnasium, just a moment?
Yes, we took out. Actually, the, sorry, you have it in front of you, I gave you all a single piece of paper. On the top of that. It says. So it says the cost of the gym floors from 75 to 60, remove $12,000 for the weight room and $12,000 for the cardio. Those were the two changes that were made to the budget since, from our last discussion.
Are you looking something up though? Is that what we're?
No, listen, I'm just waiting for any other questions.
Okay, that's what I was making sure I can ask, if anybody has my question. Thank you.
Questions?
The questions. All right.
Thank you. In the budget under the fees. We haven't made any specific changes to the short-term rental program since last year. We have been discussing the need to be able to make those changes. What Brian and Cracking and I wanted to bring to you from the Office of Code Enforcement. Is to. Gather your input. And to ask your. Consideration on. What the entire goal, what are lodging industry, the collection of taxes, um, the equity? How to. More and more traditional lodging venues are having to rely on short-term rental systems. To be able to maintain a presence. For rental. And whether it's a motel room or. Six cabins or, you know, condos up above a beer pub. Or. Several studios that are managed under one that was brought to the board several years ago as a B and B, but doesn't serve practice. Everything that I'm talking about is being operated as short-term rentals in the commercial district. So I think one of the things that I'd like to talk to the board about is. Should the town look at? The short-term rental industry inside the commercial district or the downtown core differently? Than they do in the single-family home neighborhoods? As we talk about what the possible impacts have been on short-term rental, on rental units. We should talk about the positive and negative impacts of these different types of lodging in the downtown core, but also. The growth of them outside the downtown core. Do we want? Do we want to keep them more here? Do we want to spread it out? Do we want to stop it? What I hate is the idea that. We're, we're not doing a good job again. Over several years, we're trying to create a process. Where we can point to a listing and say, it goes here. You know, they paid or they didn't pay, they're supposed to pay, they're not supposed to pay, and how much? And just when you think you have it figured out, it changes. The other thing is that puts. You also have several different kinds of what used to be traditional lodging units changed. Some of our traditional motels don't have a front desk. Some of them still do all the time, and some of them do just for a few hours. Do we change how that is done? It, it, is it about the customer experience? Is it about revenue generation? Is it about maintaining a presence? Or, you know, how do we get people to stay? You know, that's always been the goal. We can't have a year-round economy, people don't stay nor we're not. And, you know. Mayor Protem Soban's in this industry, and he's come and talked to both Brian and I about some of the challenges. About how to make a model work A. And how to also keep. A traditional business surviving. So I, I want to pre-qualify that, Michael, to that extent, but it's an important part, and I think the perspective of that motel owner. Here, that lodge owner is big. You know, the Western River area doesn't have anybody at the front desk, that's a much different operation than it was. The, the long-term rentals that were across the street from the. Library have converted to short-term rentals. You know, they were short-term rentals and, but they were all under one license as a property expanded, they're just expanded under a single license. But there's a lot of stuff to unpack. And we're looking for guidance. We don't have big numbers or report. Brian's going to be able to share with you some of the details about what the changes are, and I provided you that in an email earlier today. It's changing every day. And. Part two of the circumstances is that unless anybody's noticed. When the program was first envisioned. And I'll, I'll ask Judy just for a perspective. When I first started on the board 14 years ago, weren't we looking at one or two homes on a block, most certainly, in short-term rentals? We didn't want them next to each other for sure.
I think at the time that it was first envisioned, we didn't try to set rules about how many should be there. But we tried to understand that. The future of this town depended on nightly rentals, because we didn't have enough motels to increase our tourism enough to keep us going. So I think we very carefully looked at how it was done and how it was set up. And there are still places like Grand Lake Estates that does not allow short-term rentals, period. Columbine Lake has made some inroads over the last few years to limit it, to say that. For the first three years that you own a property in that community, you can't do a short-term rental. After that, you can't. But I think to limit it, it's just like. Our, our motels really have not added a lot of, of new space and new beds. Over the years, so I think the situation is pretty much the same, except that we can't support our tourism now. On just the nightly rentals that we have in motels. We've got to have those short-term rentals. But I think it was very fortuitous of the board at that time to set the rates so high. That only the people who were interested in doing the short-term rentals successfully could participate. And we still have homes on, on Shattamout Lake that have been set up to have six people. And they have 30 people and then wonder how come the well went dry. You know, so there are still some real problems in the short-term rental business. But I think the motels have gotten very much more proactive. About making sure that they're staying up, keeping them current, you know, keeping them clean and neat and, and added to them. So I think the, I think the problem is. That we have some short-term rentals that are not being applied for. And when we had a. A code enforcement.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That they were going into all of the, the rental companies and were checking to make sure that everything that was showing up. Had paid the license. And you'd be surprised how many tried to get away with not doing it. And we went after him, and of course, that didn't make them all happy, but.
Which has been our current efforts, which.
But I think that right now, we're gonna, we're gonna, you're gonna look at the facts that. A lot of people are in jeopardy of losing their homes. Unless they start doing nightly runs. So I think you're going to be seeing more and more of them come on board. Even though the industry tells you that it's very weak now for short, short-term rents.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I think I got off topic.
No, no, thank you. That, that answered the question, it's. You know, the rates haven't changed a whole, whole lot. Since when this began. I mean, we're talking a couple hundred bucks. And. The board. Do you want to use pricing to kind of influence certain types of rentals or. Certain ways to be able to rent? And, and then, you know, just thinking about those smaller units. Those, those units that are 400 square feet or smaller, right? That. You certainly don't want to put another burden on the existing businesses. To throw in other hundreds of dollars. So how do you count for? How do we, how do we say, yep, the box is checked because they fit this category of rooms? Because we're able to find. A lot of people doing with short-term rentals, things in the town of Grand. Okay, Brian?
That's gotta be hard to police. Well, it is, and as Steve mentioned, the landscape keeps changing as well. And looking at some of the other towns, they identified, obviously, the business district. And how the short-term rentals are going to be handled there. The residential areas, okay, well, we're only going to allow one per block, or there can't be another one within 500 feet. Every town has something different, and, and we kind of have to take a step back, because Grand Lake doesn't really have a huge industry to help support us. We're not like Lower Park, we don't have a ski area. We are a tourism town, and we have to figure out the best way to do this, but at the same time. We also have. A housing issue as well. So it's, do we want to start regulating these in specific parts of the town? Do we want to cap where they are? Do we want to have more tour? Do we want to charge different rates? Now, obviously, we don't want to penalize the hotels and motels in town. But we need to kind of have this conversation of what's working and what's not. And it's, it's a changing monster. It keeps changing all the time. We have. Lodges. Then there's hotel mops, and we'll short-term rentals, resort cabins, then breakfast, there's all these different names. And some of them, like we talked about, the Western River era. That sold out that part of, across the library, but they're still considering themselves a hotel. Okay, well, are they? And what are we, how do you define them? Now, they do have someone that when people check in, they have an agreement and whatnot, so they do have that service. Mike and I talked about this, where it's something that when people come to town and looking for something to do. Or where to eat, or just basic advice, it's something that the hotels and motels have. And provide as a service, and it's something that people will appreciate. Whereas with short-term rental, we check in, that's it. Then we also have several properties with four or five cabins on. Are those considered hotels? Are those motels? There's other properties that have been in town operating that way for years and years, so. We really kind of need, I, I personally, because I'm the short-term rental officer. I want to be able to let people know, okay, here, this is, this is your rate, and this is why. We determined that you're operating at this level. With this many beds, or this many rooms, or this much square footage, but. Each town kind of does it their own way. We kind of have to decide on how we want to take care of it. And I wish I had some numbers, some data, but what I'm finding is the system that we're using right now. It's kind of garbage in, garbage out. And Trump's still trying to get it cleaned up. So even if it says that they're active, they might have been closed two years ago. So I'm trying to get it cleaned up so we have a better idea of these numbers and honestly, the revenue.
Is this the system for the applications and all of that? Was that called something?
Sugar, sort of gobble it.
Yes, it's video revs.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's what we're using, but again, it's not entering, the information's not entered correctly, or if it hasn't been kept up.
Yeah. We prepared that analysis. To hand out, and when we looked at it, over half of the.
Revenue numbers.
The revenue numbers were way high, because it said that 250 to 332 days were the amount that was being rented. By over 50% of the homes here, so, and, and that is like, you look at. People you know that, because you drive by the house all the time, that that number is wrong, and suddenly that entire data. Column. Becomes lost, and Brian spent time just trying to get an answer from that without much result.
Right, exactly, and then it's. There are some. There are some properties that were purchased by an LLC specifically for short term rental. And then you have the homeowners that aren't up here all the time. And as Judy said, you know, maybe they need that extra income to help them be able to afford that. Two different buckets.
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts.
Yeah, yeah. Another, um, another thing that. A number of towns that, that we've seen and, and checking around is limiting the number of licenses of owner. Of, you, you know, and it goes to beneficial ownership as well. So that you can't have more than two properties in town to have a license.
I definitely think we, we should look into trending towards that, limiting how many. Um, I also think if we're gonna do anything, we really have to work with the county because. No matter what we talk about here, it's consolidated to this tiny little island that's rent. We have to look at this in a much larger picture because really the issue I think is making it fair for businesses. And making sure that we're not squeezing out all the housing that we have. Now, I watch these numbers ridiculously close. Um, and one thing that I have seen is a really steady increase in the amount of short term rentals that are happening here. And what I think is gonna happen, and this is a benefit to all of us, is a lot of them that we've had. Historically have been people who, if it's a second home, they see an opportunity to either buy into. Um, the area and they just rent it out sometimes, or they've had a family cabin forever and they're just like, yeah, let's offset this, maybe they've inherited it or something and they do that. With the increase in the amount of short term rentals that we've had. They're buying these properties and that's the LLC component that I, that I was talking about specifically to rent them. So they're entering a really saturated market already. They're taking more real estate. But one thing they are doing is they're really investing into the property and the experience and they're adding value, not just for them. But to the community, right? What I think we're gonna see is a lot of those existing, thank you, Brian. A lot of those existing properties, um, that we're just renting out, you know. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight months out of the year and not full time, those are probably gonna go away. I think a lot of those people are gonna see a lot, a lot larger hit now that we're getting more and more properties and more and more competition. I think that's gonna open up a lot of housing. We're just kind of at this tipping point. Um. For instance, I think I mentioned this last meeting or the previous meeting before. What do you guys think is the biggest weekend of the year for short term rentals? So Fourth of July is actually like seventh on the list of weeks for, um, rent. Why is that? Because everyone comes up here for the Fourth of July and then rents at half the other times. So top weeks are like. Third, fourth, fifth week of July, some in September, August. And then it all falls off, but you see these huge trends around all of our big holidays. It's just everyone comes up for the weekend and rents at the rest of the year. I think if we let this spit for a little bit. I don't wanna say it's going to self-correct, but I think it's going to open up opportunities for people to see. More opportunity and revenue for selling their place or renting it to a long-term renter. I mean, we're already seeing a lot of people don't even rent their place in the winter, in the winter time. On Airbnb, they rent it long-term, it's something from like the ski area, you're in the ranch, something like that. Um, hundred percent on board with uh, limiting the amount. Down the line, but we need to work with the county. Otherwise, we're just cannibalizing anyone who lives in town and has property here. It's gonna affect their property values, for sure. But right now, I think making sure that we're allowed to people who are gonna bring value to the community and rent full time, I, I think it's good. But people who are just, you know, buying a house, renting it sometimes or not, they're taking. Properties away from long-term renters, they're taking properties away from anyone who wants to buy in town. And they're just, you know, renting it here and there just to offset the cost of them. We're left with whatever they have. Yeah, then we're good. Yeah, pretty much, yes.
And I like what you said about the property values because we, in our neighborhood, they've got. You were talking about Columbine, like a couple people came, they've had enough. They, they don't wanna party house next to her, they just, they build out, keep this. They don't want that anymore, so we gotta think about the people who've actually invested in our town too. Yeah, they live there full time, they just, they, they can't park and they come home and there's people on the driveway, there's a lot of parties, there's.
They fill up the dumpsters and.
Do you get a lot of complaints? Cause I, I hear complaints about, about renters.
Well, see, the, every, the county doesn't have, Brian. The county doesn't have, I don't take any.
We need to definitely open this up with. Because we can sit here and have the best plan ever and all it's gonna do is. Change a couple of things within our area and maybe hurt a few of the people who own here. And then we don't change anything with housing. We don't change anything with the, the stigma around short term renters. We don't change any of it because. Eighty percent of Grand Lake is not even in town. So we're gonna have any sort of conversation around that, maybe figure out, why, why can't you share a system? That's one thing I think.
We started with, that was the first system, was a shared system, that's why the buy-in cost was low. And then they sold and. Not everybody bought in again and it fractured within the first two years.
Is that nobody bought in again because it was more difficult or what?
The system. The collaborative nature of that particular system kinda broke down. Talking together, yeah, you know, we have, you know, cloud permit works really well with the county. Uh, for building permits. And, and that's a great model for how we all talk together. I don't know if that system is out there.
Um, it has to, I mean, five years ago, Airbnb wasn't. No, it's very huge, it was definitely growing, it had been around for, I don't know, when did it start? Twenty-fourteen, twenty-fourteen we started? There's probably a better system out there that we can all buy in on. And then it opens up the conversation of working with the county on how we improve stuff, but. No matter what we do in town, I don't think it's gonna even make a chink in what we have for overall.
And some of that is we use what, what we have to, to manage that and, but uh, I. I circle back around and the answer could be collaboration with the county is how do we set rates? You know, how do we, how do we address those smaller spaces? Do we just check the box and say, well, they have a license? As a lodge and three boxes checked and that's done and we wait to address those later and, you know.
I mean, we double slash your big houses.
Yeah, 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 which is where on, yeah, the big size. Yeah, it, the issue becomes the numbers.
Yeah.
Right, does, and, and we don't get a lot of complaint calls. You know, usually it's one or two and it's for a weekend, you know, it's a particular person, it's not. There, there's a couple houses in town that regularly do capacity rentals, you know. Brian could name each one, probably some of the people here in town get two, that, the ones that have fifteen, sixteen people. And that changes the dynamics, but there's an awful lot of them that, because now there's three of them. Right around me, that's one or two cars max, you know, it's, it's a couple or, or, or a family. And they typically are just there.
So I don't feel like it's Columbine, like I've heard numerous nightmares about that. And to your point, if people are moving out, because they just can't deal with it. People racing up and down the streets in the quads or snowmobiles or whatever, it's just a party atmosphere out there. I don't feel like it's that way in town. We get a complaint once in a while. Maybe on a holiday weekend that, you know, there's more people staying in the house, but now we have the ability to find them. We have, you know, corrective measures that we can take.
I've never been to like a lot of like people racing snowmobiles and side by sides. I don't know a lot of people that rent an Airbnb now. That's like locals or thing.
No, in our neighborhood, they bring the trailer up.
Occasionally, yes, but how many of them are also locals or the second homeowner?
Yeah.
I think that's just.
Party of them up there just because I'd see it. As well, these second or group ownership home or where there's snowmobiles are all there and. Parents are watching football and they're like, oh, sure. You got a little nine-year-old's on, he's coming with CC sleds, just living up Mill Street.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not short term. I'm sure there's definitely a loophole, I've, I've seen it, I've heard it, but. I think that's just collectively bad people coming to town and being disrespectful. But I think there's a couple other things we can do if we work with the county as far as passing rules and regulations to make less issues for party houses. I was in college, we rented a house, a sub fifteen, we brought thirty-five. I mean, I did it horrible, I know.
You're, you're assuming the county cares for that.
Well, I, I think there's some things we can do. There's a couple, there's a couple other companies and programs out there. We've got decimal monitors. That people put in their homes and it actually notifies you and Airbnb, hi, it's too loud. I think we can get to the point if we work with the county, because again, we could do this in town. It's not going to affect anything outside of town. Um, I don't, I think those require for the larger houses.
I would be curious what the county will take on and what Baldwin don't want. I think that's a good. Um, piece to, to question and, and ask and see what they're willing to do and, and what we could do with them.
Are they receptive?
No, but the people I've talked to that's moved out Columbine, so they beat their head against the wall, talking to the county, you get no answer.
I mean, Grand Lake for them is this much, I mean, the doubt of. That issue is, that's happening on the east side of South.
It is, but it's low on their totem pole of, of things that they want to, to deal with. I mean, I've had conversations with Winter Park. Um, officials that deal with these same things. I think. I, I'm not saying, you know, I, I do think that there's a piece that Manager Kujron can, can look into and he knows the right people to talk to to see. You know, what avenues we might have or approaches and I can talk to other, the mayors of. You know, the rest of the county and see what we could put together, meaning. A group of people to take the bull by the horns and see what we could do. So I'm not saying no, I'm just. Off the top of my head, I think some of this, you know, it's good conversation for us to have. Um, from the county perspective, but I think it needs to be like, what do we want to see even if we do move forward with the county? So what are the things that, you know, Brian, to you, you know, what do you see? Think even your personal opinion about this discussion, what things do we need? What should we really consider? I mean, what, what do you think? You're the one in the trench.
Right, well, and Steve and I have had several conversations about this. It's. More of identifying the buckets and where these different properties fit.
Right, that's.
Um, and that's kinda.
And that's a Grand Lake piece because we're so different than the county with the older.
Right.
With the Western Riv and, and across from the library. I think that's. We need to kinda come to what we are interested in and what we want so that when the county gets involved, you know.
We've already identified those buckets.
Thank you.
Right, right, exactly, but. Again, there's, there's properties just right over here that have been operating as a motel. In my opinion, I don't think they are. They're four individual units, four freestanding buildings. There's no one there on the property, but yet they're. Being taxed differently. I don't know if it's higher or lower, if they're, um. If you can help into that, but.
So it's, hold on, before we get too far, Ken, so. I completely understand like the buckets thing. Can we get a couple of just general numbers to start with so we're all on the same page? Do you have any rough idea of how many SDRs? Actual permits are issued for town? I know you said everything junk in, junk out.
Yeah, let's just say.
One fifty, good. Out of all of those.
And it's just pound problem.
Yes, we're in Robert with a license.
Out of all of those, how many? Of those? Technically have a single permit that you feel like. Multiple cabins, they're, they're not large single fans. Like how many, how many of those one fifty, ten?
I mean, of the, but account for. Forty? So, so the one fifty is a number of permits, right?
Right.
So now you'd add another forty?
Right, well, and that's, that's my question, right? So we have ten of these that are.
Actually forty.
That, that, that could, if you break them up. And they might, I, I mean, it makes.
Listings, it's forty listings, so it, so that comes to, and how many listings are in the town of Grand Lake, right? And more than. Yeah, probably close to three hundred.
Wait.
So, so someone has an STR license, but their property has multiple units. They have four cabins, they have uh, four flex and four ends, but it's one STR license, but there's four listings. So that, and that's kinda the, the categorizing thing and it's, it was part of the conversation that the three of us had. And, and I really break it down into.
I mean, that's essentially like subdividing your house or subdividing your property that. Here in town, you would get taxed an additional property value. Like, it, you know, it, it makes complete sense that if they're. Splitting that off into multiple properties, it should have.
Separate licenses.
Yeah, or it should be an actual hotel.
So this is, this would be like the six, seven, eight little cabins that are one or two bedrooms on a property, right? And they, do they come in with a license for a one bedroom or do they come in with a license for this place sleep sixteen?
Okay, yes.
That's, that's, that's what we're trying to get to, that's, well, you are sitting here today.
They do both and we say.
I mean, I bet that this is probably. Very few properties that do this.
No.
I mean, we're not talking a hundred.
No, no, but we're, we're talking, I mean.
Ten, ten percent at least.
For sure, well, yeah, so ten to fifteen individual properties that have multiple listings within them.
And I think that's a lot for town.
I'm saying this is something we could probably manage manually is what I'm saying, but I think that is the individual license.
That's what we're saying.
Which is how to be able to, what does that bucket look like? Because, because for instance, so Western Riv has. Eight listings, right? Currently they pay a hundred and sixty-five dollars for a lodge license. We charge short term rentals eight hundred dollars, so that would be forty-eight hundred dollars in short term rental licenses that the Western Riv. Could be charged if we charged them per room.
Oh, they're coming in and getting one lodging license for a hotel?
Wait, 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 but so, uh, pine cone. The, the place right across the street has four separate cabins, five. And there are five different listings.
Is it one owner?
Yeah, that one's one owner.
Probably down at a resource where they have a group of cabins.
Yeah.
How do they handle that with, with licensing, I mean?
You're saying that they own di- each one is a different owner? So that's David. So David Haven, half of those, there's six of them that are individual owners. And six of them that are owned by one person that operates a lodge license. But still doing six short term rentals. I mean, they don't have anybody at the counter anymore, right? So there are twelve short term rental listings for the David Haven. Covering seven people.
But then where do we draw the line? If it's, if it's six different cabins or there's twenty different rooms.
The Lupine Village. Right, that's, that's.
Give us all these examples, I know we've talked about them, I have a list here, I'm sure I'm missing something, but.
Yeah, um, the, uh, from the rapids, the building that we re-categorized. That, so they're commercial transition, they're actually paying. Commercial taxes, but there ain't separate.
Listings.
Listings.
Aren't commercial taxes and lodging taxes for.
That's.
Isn't that higher?
Yes, that's changing too, that's a, right, so they're paying the same property. Yes, that's changing too. That's a right. So they're paying the same property taxes than a downtown cabinet.
Now she's feeling paid.
Okay, so now these two. Western Riv and that li- that building, they're paying the same property taxes. But that guy's being told to get eight licenses and and eight fire inspections. And that one spends a hundred and sixty-five dollars. For a business license as a lodge.
I mean, is the end goal here, we want to cap, we want to capture two thousand dollars a year from this multi cabin?
No.
Yeah, that's where it.
It is. It it becomes. And it goes to Judy's original vision of how we or the towns at that, right? We didn't want such a tight program that it discourages people. Grand Lake recognizes we need lodging. But we want it to be equitable. We also want business owners who want to do things the right way.
What is the right way?
What the rule says. So the rule says that if you're on Airbnb, you're supposed to be paying a short term rental license. But.
And is that per address? Is that per listing? Is that?
It's per listing is the way that we have it set up per unit.
I mean, Airbnb has reached out to me at West on the Inter, so.
Right, and 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 it only made sense. You know, there are tens of thousands of people that look at Airbnb Grand Lake every day. And no matter how much money a lodge or a motel spends on marketing here, you'll get a fraction of that. Look, so uh we don't want to hurt them, but at the same time.
It's not fair. There has to be a balance.
Totally. And and the fair is checking a box, right? It's.
I don't think we can decide fair unless we have all of the numbers, understanding taxes, understanding license fees, understanding potential revenue. We have to look at all of it. And I sit here and just say that's fair, that's not fair.
And what's happened in other towns, so several towns in our area and resort towns. So everything from Granby, Winter Park. To rec, they they do what's called a nexus study to be able to justify the amount of fees being able to charge for the impact and the cost of that. In our area, that number is twenty-eight hundred dollars a listing. So Granby charges eight hundred dollars a room.
The county's a hundred dollars a person.
Yeah, but they're eight times. They're ginormous. And we're in that somewhere middle and in the middle and we don't get a lot of complaints. But we want to be able to do our job. We want to come here and report that, you know. We know that we've got a whole lot more people complying than a year ago. Our our numbers have increased because of that. And we spend a lot of time. It turns out that the rules say you have to send a cease and desist order. Before you can even demand money. So we started sending out some of these. And, you know, when John Waller car calls and he's like. Cool, great, but why are you setting a cease and desist? Cause I have to do that before I can ask you if you've paid your fees. And he's like, well, I just write a check and drop it off. I don't know. He's been writing the same amount of check for the last four years. You know, we've changed rates. But that's how we've let it work. So kind of in that having people working at the same time, you see his property. He's invested a lot of money into that, into the red sled. What used to be. So I mean, he's doing what we want short term renters to do. Improve their property appearance, bring people in. You know, we don't want to tell them you gotta pay five times more because. You're in one of that group. We need guidance and all of the numbers in the world, it's going to come back to what you said. What's best for the town. And we're going to have to decide. Is it about keeping track of numbers and making it just to cover the cost of what we're doing? And when it becomes too many people, it becomes too many people. Do we want to manage areas and zones? That's another thing that they've done and the resort zone or the neighborhood zone. So where are, where's the bulk of the people that are the true full time second homeowners? The Grand Lake Estates keeping keeping that vibe. And already we have twenty, twenty-five percent of our town has that vibe. So is it? Plenty that's exclusive with no short term rentals. When we look at the whole town, pack the rest in, because we already have twenty-five percent set aside. That's what we we talk about it all the time. And we keep coming up with, do we ask you for more money? Do we do more enforcement? Do we become more hammered down and? We also want to be fair. You took the hammer down on somebody because you found them first.
So just, Mike, if you have more and not cutting you off, but you have a lot of time to talk to. Do you have any? I would like to, but.
Do I just want to get a graph on where we are at?
Well, just, I want to kind of go around a little bit and get everybody's perspective and I would appreciate yours being that this is in your purview. And and then let's kind of have Brian talk a little bit as well about some other things for us to think about. You know, because this is evolving and it's changing and it's something that's going to take a lot of detail. So, Mike, will you start as Mike and then we'll.
Um I mean, that was, I I just wanted clarification on where we were at roughly this year. How many of these were kind of an issue that were. Trying to figure out where I put them. And, you know, I realize none of this is any type of dis- decision. It's just discussion at this point in time. So fairly open to anything really um. I'd like to see some some more numbers um and I know it's hard right now, obviously um. But just jump knowing. I mean, maybe like how many of those S T Rs are actually paying a commercial rate versus residential? And, you know, and I'm with Julia, I'm like, if if you can make it. Fair somehow. That's generally the way to go. But I kind of like overall, I kind of get the. That feeling of, I don't necessarily like the fact that. All these, all the cabins across from the library are on one S T R license. Um because those are in my mind, separate cabins and. But I, I guess I don't understand. I I don't have enough clarification on on where they're at in commercial taxes versus any of the rest of that stuff and where that plays out. Into possibly. I guess return for ten.
I think a part that I would add to that as well. They are saying they're a hotel because they do have somebody there to greet and help and check in and all that. So keep that piece in mind as well, where you have other properties that there's nobody there. And it's like having an S T R, but it is a hotel room. So it's not going to just be.
Well, in in realistic, that scenario. I- is not much different than the small condos over the top of the hub or anything like that. And all of those are separate, so.
Half and half. So one owner has almost all of them and then there's two separate owners above that. Three licenses.
What happens in.
Yeah, that is correct.
This is one house. They have a listing for. The one half of it and the other half of it and then renting the whole thing.
Right.
Like a lock off. Each mother-in-law plan that's up, okay?
Yeah, so like sometimes they just want to rent the mother-in-law. Sometimes they want to rent the whole thing.
Right.
I mean, generally that lands under different license structure just based on the amount of people you're sleeping, so.
That goes back to fellows.
Yeah, they would have to go back or they would.
They should get the license for the larger new home.
Yeah, that's that's what I would think. And that's probably going to be the same.
We do have a large house and then a carriage house. So the carriage house above the garage is a separate listing.
So we need the license for the larger. That's uh lazy, lazy moose or the best management. I literally can't remember. I've been in there five times. Those places have a kitchen. Yeah, dude. Is that one a single license or?
Not possible. It's like a single license.
It's a single license.
As like a motel.
So it's not a short term rental. And then we need to just look at the comparison between. Commercial lodging licenses, taxes and fees. And then short term rental licenses, taxes and fees and just make it fair.
And what was it zoned before we changed it, whatever?
It's so it was it was zoned residential, changed to C T, but.
See, if it was residential, then they.
But it was assessed commercial underneath the residential zone.
Correct.
Because of the use. They purchased that property. They went to legal to make sure that they did it correctly.
And we have some sort of information, the numbers, so we can assess the fairness that we.
Would you, would you like it tedious, but could it be better to have it in property example like?
Maybe, I I mean, so realistically, you come back to like this hotel motel.
All of them.
Type scenario, right?
Yeah.
And those are your typical lodges that we think about and. Ninety percent of those don't have a kitchen or anything like that. Those. In my mind, would fall under one license because you're not necessarily, it's like. It is hotel or motel. It's lodging.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a room.
Versus an actual short term where you have. A sit down.
Okay.
A like, but that wouldn't be a short term rental, but no kitchen.
That's what you said.
But there's a place in town that has multiple units under one name. They have kitchens and they consider themselves a day better breakfast.
Yeah.
But the big picture is not that the artist.
And and that's that's where I have the discretion. Uh on that single licensure.
And then it's something else to consider is when Airbnb kind of first started. It was a residence that was renting on the blue.
Yeah, right.
In the halls.
Back to your.
So that, I mean, all of these different factors and.
I mean, that's like you go to, you know, the nicer hotels down. They're like, would you like a suite with a kitchen? I got kids, so I'm like, hell yeah.
Your rate goes up.
Yeah, yeah. You stay at the Four Seasons? Yeah, no.
If there's a pub on.
Bob, what do you think, Russ?
Oh, it's got a pool. I don't think. We we need a level playing field. Can't have. Get rid of the discretion that people, because they're going to off with the easiest, cheapest.
Of course.
So, you know, we can't let them do that. So we're going to have to put some definitions out. Here's your box. You, that that's where you go. You fit in this box. That's.
Exactly.
I think we absolutely.
So. So we need more information. So let's let's build some buckets. And then what we can do is we'll create those buckets as as we have kind of heard. Commercial property, the commercial. Tax, residential tax. We haven't even got to one of the other documents on here that says, starting in twenty twenty-six. It says that any residential property that rents more than ninety or a hundred days. Can be assessed commercial on both the property and personal property. This board has sat here several times and says both of those are their purview. The inspection and the determination of the county assessor. And this board has no jurisdiction over what. The assessment of personal property or land is. So I don't even know how we could even start to try to regulate this rule.
That's going to go through the county, doesn't it?
That goes all the way back full circle. So that is the county controlling half of what our short term rental policy maybe.
On the tax rate.
Yeah. So maybe we just were reactive to that. And what they do on a yearly basis is part of the analysis. If it's commercially zoned or commercially assessed. Can you go one direction? If it's residentially assessed, you go another direction.
We need the assessor.
A starting point.
Yeah.
It it sure, I mean, it's.
If we got the assessor in for a plan, I'd like to know what the plan of doing for that law.
Like the legal, I don't know.
Well, then there's a no, um, one of the hotel grounds. To be considered residential, you have to live there, you stay there, I think it's a hundred and twenty days. So anything, right? So anything above that, then you're considered, it's a business. And I think that's something else that we kind of have to take a step back because we have. Businesses that are coming into term and buying up our property that are just renting out, okay? Now, is that fair for the homeowner, the second homeowner who's had it for years and years and years? Maybe they fell upon some hard times and now they need need to rent it out. I mean, there's so many different factors in this and I think that once we get more information gathering, that's going to be the challenge, but.
I think it's worth it.
It's a lot and uh what opened up my eyes to say, we've got to talk to you guys about it. Two of the new homes that have gotten C O's in the last three months are rentals.
Yeah.
And and.
Full time.
Yeah, right down the street.
Brand new.
Two brand new homes.
I mean, I there's a.
That went short term, but then and it goes back to paying for the mortgage, right?
There's an article, um, sorry. No, you're fine. It's not an article. It's a YouTube and I'm going to send it to all of you. It's um top. Top ten Colorado mountain towns in total freefall, real estate disaster. Did you?
I didn't read it, but yeah.
Well, it's. Because it's all Colorado towns and most of them are ski towns and. There's a lot of good information in here that doesn't necessarily pertain to the S T R, but there is because it's underlying. And one of the things that a lot of these towns are running into is people were able to buy. At the higher value of the home when the homes were really expensive because they could S T R. And. Nobody can live there anymore. And so they're all in this housing crisis and it it all. It all rolls into one ball. And so just take a look at it because I think it's important for all of us to kind of pay attention. Read some articles, think about, you know, the the real estate market as a whole, because it, this does affect that. Um. But I think you two.
Yeah, and I kind of want to echo that. There was an article that came out within the last week of. Real estate sales actually being more local rather than. Out of town. I don't know what the terminology was, but that was something that I go that article that you had uh outlined there. Man, you know, we talked about this a few months ago with Steve and Brian as as summer is coming to a close and. And Brian has done research and checked on these properties as, you know, this is a. Residential property, but they are running as S T R. There's multiple units and and there's just so many examples of whether it's. You know, loose moose has been brought up, Lupine Village, um. The stuff across from the library, Park Avenue lofts can fall underneath that and there's probably more that I don't know about and would love to. See them, but brought, you know, categorized out as this is the type of property it is. This is how they. Get their lodging set up, whether it's through S T Rs, whether it's through a business license. Um and then Julie, you mentioned no caps and on S T R numbers and that was a conversation that we had when I. First started here, actually the first year of my term was actually hammering down S T R stuff and. And some of the aspects were um taken out of those conversations. Some were set aside. I don't know if they were. Utilized and then we had S T R license numbers that reflected how many, you know, people they could have and and cars and now it's all actually in an S T R license. So you could know very quick that based on the license that this is the amount of people. So you could know very quick that based on the license that this is the amount of people, it's cars, whatever. I don't know how far that went, but part of the conversation was a cap out. And, and it was something I realized is a lot of these properties that fall within commercial. Um, and commercial transitional and businesses attached to them, a good example is. Uh, World's End Group Hub, you know, they used to operate as a better breakfast many, many years ago, it was one owner. There's actually brunch downstairs, um, and then upstairs, now it's separated, see, you have worlds and then you have the three or four units that are. Upstairs and technically they don't fall underneath the S T R licensing correct, so. Would that be?
Right, they have, they have lots.
That, that's where we, you know, have a lot of these. Anomalies of businesses that. Are in betweens between the S T R and the full lodging. We're hearing more and more with, you know, front desks open and Brian kind of touched base on. As a lodge, everybody huge service of pointing people in the right direction and spending five minutes explaining the timed entry system that. You'd be lucky enough to get a three binder, uh, S T R generally outdated and stuff like that, those some of them. Um, I mean, I still consistently get people in the dumpster and order some of the Brian's, some. That's the wayside, but. Back in front of them and just told them and they said, well, we thought that was the dumpster, you know, so. Um, conversations that we've had, they have actually categorizeding i- is the biggest thing for me as there's. Just that's where it becomes unfair. And you kind of outline the S T R thing and pushing people out, um, that could go buying a county property with different rules here. Hey Fraser, when we last talked about, they have a five year plan for a fee schedule, you know, so. I think that's something that we could look at and then have the county realize that maybe they're behind. I- in their rules, regulations or pricing, um. If these municipalities kind of set stage here. That could be a lot of fruition, you know, I don't know if that's gonna happen, that's something that, you know, I would like to see and. Um. There's just places under one license that are operating in different ways and I've really tried to raise it myself and it's, it's tough, so. Who knows to you and you take it on and, um, and ever changing, very much ever change, as a lodge, I mean, the biggest thing for me was short term rentals. Um, i- is the off season holidays where. Let's say fifteen, twenty years ago. We'd have busier Christmases and Thanksgivings and stuff like that, that has all shifted to these larger. Homes where people celebrate Christmas as a family rather than getting three or four or five units at, at the lodge and. And that's where the, the short term rentals have hurt us the most, of course, and, and short term rentals one hundred percent dictate our lodge pricing. Although I look at pricing of other lodges. Pretty much everyone in that industry, the brick and mortar lodges and hotels and motels are really kind of basing. Especially their off season pricing based on what S T Rs are doing when. You know, whether they're pushing it off as a long term rental or, or pulling through the winter and actually doing short term rentals. They're. Lowering their price and, and that forces me to lower my price, my winter price hasn't changed. In five years, it's been flat because I can beat with those S T Rs, so. Um. And kind of without looking at numbers in detail, like winters have fallen off a little bit while the summers. Continue to hold it up, so.
I, I definitely see that as well, it's getting more saturated in the winter time, there's a lot more competition, but. Do see. A lot of those S T R properties probably falling off and either selling or going long term because it's gotten really saturated since twenty.
So my.
It's been huge.
Has the Airbnb just came to the lodges and said?
Mm-hmm, it came from New York before the summer and said, would you be interested, I said.
Sure.
I literally get YouTube ads from you guys saying ditch the hotel experience and be outdoors in a cabin. It's not predicting.
They're presenting you can cut costs.
Yeah, and, and you know, they, they, they encourage me to sell my property as like a, a house and have each, you know, like the. It's getting bad reviews, people expect a house. But the fee schedule they take for like hotels is pretty similar, so I need these third party websites, depending on. What you're doing is about fifteen to twenty, thirty percent that, that can be taken out of the, the bottom dollar and it's worse than that. The S T Rs, they just take advantage, those third parties absolutely take advantage of them, so.
It's like twenty five percent.
Yeah, I'm about fifteen for the most, um, but for me, I mean, use this as an example, it was just a third party booking dot com. Website, you have a random date chosen and you'll see. Places like mine, Gateway, Big Horn, but then in between you get loose moves lodge number six at downtown Grand Lake. And that's where I get screwed over, i- is these properties that have multiple units. But list each unit as a separate listing.
They have one license.
They have one license. So loose moves, eight units, eight listings, for me, I have one listing, you click on it and then it breaks down all my units. And that's where I draw a huge line and it's a tough. Being able to figure out, but.
That's V R B O. It bought. Either V R B O bought booking dot com or one of the.
Expedia and booking dot com are like a fifty fifty share of everything you would not even know, so.
They're listing on, and that's just how the system works, you put a listing on V R B O, it goes on to the.
I've seen more and more short term units, you know, being listed up here.
So how do you follow the guys that don't have an agency, they just listed themselves on Craigslist for them?
So, yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the system actually has. A listings. Features, so I can go and I can take the, uh, the parcel number and drop it in and it'll. Basically scrub the internet. I'm gonna find out if, if, you know, they are indeed and I've caught. A lot of people that are, to your point, that are trying to skip out and getting a ton of license or they don't know they need one. But that's. That's.
So they don't have a fire inspection, they don't have the same rules, they won't do this thing.
They just put it on the C license.
That, that's just maybe we provide you with more resources and tools and leverage to fix that. Like, we can make the rates five thousand dollars. If they're not paying, they're not paying.
They're actually the county issue.
Yeah, what's your recourse, whether you give a citation?
Well, you've already collected a considerable amount of money.
Yeah.
Also, we can be taken to the county and then take it out of.
Really, you put a lien on the property essentially.
But some people have complied.
So if.
Most, Brian has gone to several people and said, you know. You're not complying and you owe.
Very straightforward.
And, 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 and backdating too, you say, hey, I'm, I know you, you listed this place for three years, here's. Thousands and thousands of dollars and that, you know, they. Feet.
How, how can we help you either with a system or something else to enforce these better, manage them better? To make sure that everyone is getting.
Well, I think, I think Brian is already doing that, I mean, we're, he's in process of doing a great job. I think what we need to do for him, and I'll let you answer this, but this is what we need to do is come up with.
I'm waiting.
To what, you know, Michael said. That's. She, I hate using the word fair, but it's not fair and so those are the things we need to figure out, like. You know, how are we gonna categorize to the bucket point? We need to have the buckets and we need to figure out.
It's a choice, once there aren't that many.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we can figure out, and there'll be small ones. But if we can figure out what they are and how they fit. Based on whatever.
Yeah.
Criteria that we decide on and it's gonna make it a little easier.
Uh, yeah, I definitely think. Making it fair across the board, because someone who has the opportunity to like buy a lodge and then make the decision of. I'm just gonna list this on air, on Airbnb and get a short term rental license, because it's a lot cheaper competitively than someone who's forced to do a lodge. I, I think we need to figure out where that is, um. But I, I, I will say I'm, I'm forecasting a major swing in the short term rentals. Because there's a lot of people that were making quite a lot more five years ago than they are now because it's gotten so saturated, those properties are either gonna go. Long term, sorry, everyone's just scary before that. Um, they're either gonna go long term or they're gonna sell. And that's gonna happen, I would say, in the next three.
Right, prices are changing.
Oh, it's all, I mean, like, like you said, someone just built two new properties and they're gonna list them on, on short term rental. Uh, I don't see anything wrong with that because they're building nice properties that are always gonna be available, they're focusing on that experience versus someone who knows it. Three, four, five months out of the year.
Right.
Okay, let's, um, unless anybody has anything else specifically, Dennis.
No, I just, I would, I would, what a hotel is, what's cabin, what's lodging, what motel or motel? Um, and, and there'll be some numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You only offer Kevin one.
Do you have everything, like, do you want a different system, do you have the leverage you need to continue?
Things like.
Can you make your job better?
Trying to figure things out, but I think it's, it's working, but. If you all could send me, like, what information do you want? That would be really all, because it's, I mean, I've got access to all this stuff. I don't know how to use it properly yet, but, you know, it's. A plethora of information, I just need to know what is gonna help you decide. On what we need to call those different levels.
Okay, all right. Thank you, with the discussion, manager Cruz, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, let's adjourn, uh, the workshop for now and well, let's come back in ten minutes. Um, we start at six o'clock this evening with, um, our regular workshop adjourn.
Yeah, Mike, yeah, what's that, whoops, oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
You myself, Bob, all action.
We have a member.
You got the sample.
If someone kidnapped Armstrong.
Yeah.
He walked out, he walked out the front door.
Right, he's helping them. You didn't want to shut it before.
Oh. I thought I had, I thought I did, um, I had a cat. On the back dock. Of my house. And that sugar ran outside and then sugar was more scared of the cat. I can't remember. Okay, let's, are you ready?
Right, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, it's six o'clock on November twenty fourth, thank you for, um, those of you that are joining us online and in the audience. I'd like to call this regular meeting for the Town and Grand Lake Board of Trustees to order. You can stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance at least. You never know. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. During this time, please silence your phones or any other devices. Remember, we are recording, any conversations you need to have, please take them outside. Recordings will be available for review within the next twenty four to forty eight hours. And nothing else to add at this time. Uh, so Mike Arston, uh, just stepped out for a few minutes, um, he will be back. And, uh, trustee Shoner is absent this evening, um. I'll entertain action on that, roll call, please.
I'm going to squeeze trustee Shoner from tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Mills.
Hi.
Uh, trustee Pissop, I. Mayor Person, someone, or Mayor Burks. I, thank you. All other trustees are here this evening. Any conflicts of interest? Trustee Miller.
No conflicts.
Trustee Pissop. No conflicts, trustee Mills.
Move on.
Mayor Person, so on, um, and Mayor Burks. I don't, I have none. Mayor's report. I went back and forth with writing, um, different reports this week and I really don't have anything, um. I think I wanted to just speak in general, um. That the last month or so has been very difficult for, um, members in the community. The town, the staff. And that, um, I hope after tonight's proceedings that we're all able to. Move on past these difficult times, we, those of us that have been on the board for quite a while know that these. Types of things happen and that they're unfortunate and this one was, um, in my opinion. Very. Disgusting. And I'm very disappointed in several things that have happened and I hope that. We can all, uh, move past quite a bit of this. And start to. I would say. Become the community that I know we can be and, um. And move on. Of that. Happy Thanksgiving. I know that we all have a lot to be thankful for and for those even on our board, holidays are always difficult and. Um, family is important and so I hope that. Everyone does have a safe. And excellent Thanksgiving and town will start to, um, get busy and start after today and we have the tree lighting this weekend, which I think you all know is one of my favorite. Events that we do as a town. And, um, I look forward to seeing everything that Miss Weeks and, uh, Mrs. Weeks and. Ms. Carol have done and, and public works that are making the tree lighting go out. It's a great celebration and I'll pass it on to manager Kudra.
Thank you very much. It's been a busy couple of weeks, under activities and events, physical the musical was arousing success for our local high school lesbians. Standing room only was reported at all three shows and some town tickets sold out. More than six hundred patrons attended, attended the shows over the three days. The program would love to be able to keep producing shows in twenty twenty six, one in the winter and one in the spring. We'll be presenting a request for these shows at the December eighth meeting. In addition to the fact that. It's a really great place to hold a show and the kids enjoyed it. Um, we were able to bring back something that the county lost. And, um. The county stepped up and wasn't afraid to come here and it was a bunch of fun. So, uh, two weeks ago when we got to hear. You know, the kids re- rehearsing, that was a lot of the fun and it just continued on through, um, the event, um. I did have a face to face and I've also received the written recap, so we'll be able to provide you some more of those details. Next time around. Grand Lake Tree Lighting will be this Friday, it would be great if we can see all the trustees able to attend this annual tradition. Um, tomorrow the heaters will be installed, so it'll be nice and toasty under the heck of a building. Um. Do whatever you gotta do, dance, pray, or just scream at the sky, but a white. Field would be much nicer than a green one. Um. The Conservation Trust grant applications have been sent to continue the ambassador program for twenty twenty six with H T A. And the preliminary twenty five report has been presented. Um, let me know if you want any details on these, we'll be meeting with you for what the specific. Request is, H T A will be coming to with. More of a menu of services. And how the headwaters trails alliance can best support our area. Colorado Water Board has approved the Shoshone Water Act and with Grand County Colorado River District. So the hundred ninety nine dollar million purchase will continue to move forward. Um, goal number one is now getting the federal government to release the forty million dollars of previously committed dollars. Um, the purpose of this purchase and right is to maintain recreational downflows. Along the upper headwaters of the Colorado River, especially during, um, times when the fisheries. Um, are. Really impacted by heat and water. The Town and Three Lakes Watershed Association completed interviews with Windy Gap Environmental Fund. For hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for storm water mitigation, um. While we were committed those dollars, it was a part of a larger program and we've had to resubmit to have those dollars for separate program. We just complete. We just complete our Colorado Empty Compact Accelerated Grant Request. It's a nine hundred and forty thousand dollar grant request. I, I've got that available for you if you'd like to see that. Holiday Dinner is December fifth. If you haven't seen your invites, I'm not sure if I have, but we'll get a reminder and make sure that those are in the email boxes. We'll be having final interviews. We weren't able to connect with our candidate. Hopefully, we'll be making an offer. Stephanie Rhoades is joining our staff on December first, but she just could not wait. So everybody here in front of you waving her hand like a princess is starting up. And as a new town treasurer, it was really exciting to see her in here today, looking at numbers and getting familiar with some of the processes and programs, so. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Once she gets started is when we'll be able to bring forward to you her contract for appointment. The twenty-sixth wage analysis being completed, it'll be ready for the December eighth meeting. Because we are, we're only making three percent cost of living increases. Our wage bands haven't dramatically changed. And the twenty-twenty-five audit engagement will be presented at the December meeting as well. We'll be meeting with Steve Dazio later this week. It's been confirmed that we don't need this audit. There's lots of construction problems continuing through the way months. Most of them are interior except for two. They're getting there, but we still do have a foundation going up on two projects. Brian keeps working on code enforcement. Fortunately, the bears are asleep. We do have several pre-development projects and the commission and board. You should expect to see some more information about nine hundred grand at the next meeting, both planning commission and river board meeting. Local planning capacity grant is being adjusted to allow for some more services in-house to be paid for by the grant. I'm expected to bring in a planner in the next couple of weeks once the amendment to the grant is complete. You guys have met him. Adam started as an intern with Antero. He has a family home up here, so it'd be great that we'll have a planner be able to work and have a house. Mentioned that the heaters are being installed. The remodel of the bathrooms at the pavilion will be completed this week. One of those out of service all summer. We were hoping that the Pitkin House would heat the bathrooms enough to keep them open all winter long. But when they turn the kiln on in the Pitkin House, it warms up that side plumbing warm enough that the furnace doesn't begin. So what we will be planning to do is do our semi-winterization, which is we just keep the water flowing, but thaw. And then we'll make sure to open them up for events. Park Avenue Tree Removal is complete. We did do that without doing the individuals one. We wanted to make sure that our work got coming. Snowplow routes and stone removal plans are in place. Boat rap's been removed and the federal gate closures, you'll start seeing Tanahoot Two. The trail has been closed and I expect we'll probably see later either this week or next week. They'll be closing the gates at Hilltop. For water bills have been sent, came this year at the end of the month. We've been receiving many, 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 many checks. Pontoon boats have been ordered. I'll have more information on the Denver Boat Show. I'm working with coordinating the the train and boats to get out of here before the snow gets too bad. You'll see in the fee schedule, some of the fee changes and the recommendations for evaluation rates for the twenty-twenty-six season to enhance not only the experience, but also and surging and where we have the most demand to make it a good time for everybody. Ace Throw is doing its thing. We're down to once a week. Maker Space continues to progress. Changes have been required. We, we were able to put the the blow-in insulation was done today, so we'll be able to continue to work on now putting in the internal batting on the walls. I want to specifically thank Jimmy Strickland and Elk Mountain Construction. The engineers had certain structural requirements for the roof that weren't completed properly by the contractor that erected the building and Elk Mountain Construction was there for the last two days to ensure that we didn't have to cancel any of the other subs coming out. Last Thursday, the full grant payment from Colorado Creative Industries was received during the financial discussion. I'll talk to you about the impact that that has on our financial statements, both what you preached today and. Tree lighting again is on Friday. The Woodcraft Bazaar is Friday and Saturday. Next board meeting, December eighth. Any questions?
Next, we have public comments. This time is for unscheduled comments, reserved for members of the public to make a presentation to the board on any items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda. The board will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the board make any decisions on the items presented at this time, whether the board will refer items to staff for follow-up. If a member wishes to make comments regarding issues vote for decision, time will be allocated at the beginning of each non-quasi-judicial item. For items of quasi-judicial nature, time will be allocated during that time. If you'll please notice the clock above, please be mindful of the three minutes given for each individual. We much appreciate this consideration. Anyone is here to speak during these three minutes, please feel free to come up and state your name and address for the record.
I need to ask on a FaceTime tree. Technically, I live in Grandy, but I did the project for the town. Lucy Lang over here for their new facility up there. Couple issues we've had. Receiving, not really receiving final payment, but getting to where we can give a final bill. We submitted two payouts, both of which have been paid, however, second payout was overpaid substantially. We don't know what we've been paid for. Doesn't, we can't really make out for that in our records. We've been asking Steve to help us get that picture and help it. Have not got anywhere. He's given us some a lot of what we want to hear, we'll get this figured out in the next two days. Have not. That last check we got to cut was cut shortly before the filming happened. We had questions at that point of what was paid so that we could submit a final payout to get this job closed out. We have got nothing since then. Obviously, have part of a laser with an employee during that point, but with our point of contact. And it's just been a mess since then. So came to try and get some pressure on, trying to get this figured out. See what we can do to blow out this project. I don't think any of us want this to, want this to stretch into the new year. So that's why I'm here today.
Not, well, assuming we're not going to have any other comments or time. We went speaking right now, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is where the board considers tasks that are not of regular nature for the record-keeping purposes. Board member wishes to consider any of the items individually. It's appropriate to do so at this time. Any questions you guys have for manager Kudron?
Do you have a note? There's two large items, one for seventy-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. Is for the electrical or space to create. Estelle Energy, seven thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents is for the gas line is to light it. HVAC monitoring to Honeywell International for five thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. We believe during an audit that this is a fraudulent payout. We have paid that. It was paid last March. So that's been scratched. JBA Incorporated for nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars. This is an invoice from October of twenty-twenty-three. This invoice was stated by JBA not to have been paid. It, I did meet with JBA Friday afternoon. It was found during my research that, yes, in fact, that that was paid when it was due. It was paid by chap in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. There was a change order that was requested, so what they had was nine thousand one hundred and ten dollars. We received the payout for the other hundred and twenty dollars. We paid that amount. And they weren't able to reconcile the ninety-one hundred to the ninety-fourty. So while that number was settled, the three other amounts were for twenty-twenty-four invoices for pavement rehabilitation and planning. These three items were under finance as having been disputed by both the planner in October of twenty-twenty-four and Public Works as engineering services were onsite during the pavement work that was done on Shadow Park West, as well as some of the patchwork that was completed. During the research and going back into the files of the planner and the Public Works Director, I found that actually this work, and we did receive the plans, these were engineering and design plans for this work. So it's on the invoice to be paid, and JBA and I have settled that this thirteen hundred three thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars, three thousand fourteen dollars will settle all of their bills with us. And they would like to do work with us in the future. Finally, PR painting, that's the winner light bill, twelve thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. The invoice is under discussion as I have committed. I do have all those available for you if anyone would like to see the contracts or the invoices.
May I ask a question on our accounting for the space to create?
Yeah.
Financials for the town.
Yes. I do have a memo that I'll be reading to you in about five minutes.
Are you saying like, easy throw and in some category or?
It's not. It'll have to be under its own financials for the building.
And I wanted to clarify some of those numbers because it shows up, it has some impacts on not only the twenty-twenty-five budget, but also the twenty-twenty-six budget. I do believe that the majority of those impacting the, over the next year will be settled by the time we need to submit this to the state. If you have any specific questions in the financials about some of those items, we can adjust them.
Anything else on the consent agenda? I'm not hearing anything. I'll entertain an action.
Consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda. Again, move to approve the consent agenda for November twenty-fourth.
Just called board. Trustee Passo? Hi. Trustee Mills?
Hi.
Trustee Miller?
Hi.
Trustee Arson?
Hi.
Mayor Personson?
Hi.
Mayor Burles. Hi, thank you.
One, one question I had for JBA. They did the engineering on Park Avenue. Is that right?
The second one.
The second one, correct. As well as, what else have they done as the reference?
So they did the base engineering on what the cost length and dimensions for portal, which we haven't got the money to do. Shadow Park West. They did the engineering of that with the sites and the channel. And then the third one, which was the one thousand dollar one, was the repairs that were done on Center Drive.
What repairs were on Center Drive?
I, I think it's Nicole.
Okay, items for discussion. Money, money, money tonight. Financial review, September sales tax, October financial review.
Trustees, this morning I I presented you with financial documentation as I received them from our contract treasurer. Some of the things that you'll notice is that last two weeks or a month ago, when we presented the financials, we were showing a deficit of about ninety-nine thousand dollars. And this financial period, we're showing a deficit of seven hundred eighty thousand dollars. And one of the reasons is that we've started expending large chunks of money for space to create with money that we didn't have the money for. So with your understanding about a month and a half ago, in order to pay some of those, we took some transfers out of reserves, which we're waiting on the payment from Colorado Creative Industries to support both the, the match grants, the reimbursement that takes time, as well as any other costs for the vertical construction. In addition, the budget shows committed dollars of seven million dollars. It's seven point four million. It shows in the finances. Financials. And what that is, is our committed dollars to the project. We had a four million dollar grant from the Department of Local Affairs and a three million dollar grant from Colorado Creative Industries, plus some other grant avenues. Okay, those have been on our books for the past several years since we got those. Two things are going to be happening in November. Number one is that we received the, the three million dollars. So that three million dollars is going to show up on the revenue side, but it will also offset that obligation, reducing our capital obligations. That three million dollars will also allow us to return to the reserves. And we've taken, I've asked Nicole to do an analysis of what last month's average interest gained out of that reserve fund. So I will be presenting a transfer that includes that interest that would have been earned had those come out of, at the reserve state there, that will be charged against the space to create budget. More importantly, is when you look at our revenues versus expenditures, the change in the fund balance, just looking at those ins and outs for twenty-twenty-five is one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, nine hundred, or one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Or half of what our current deficit is. The space to create revenues are fifteen thousand dollars and the expenditures are one million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand as of the end of October. If those items weren't included in the general fund results, the change in the fund balance would be a positive seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. The three million dollar grant for community revitalization, which was received last Thursday. The three million dollar grant for community revitalization, which was received last Thursday, it'll increase the year-to-date revenues and the change in fund balance for the November twenty twenty-five financial statements. In addition, reimbursements have already been requested from the state from Strong Communities Grant for the infrastructure cost of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. So those revenues will also be received before the end of the year. In our capital improvement fund, the same thing can be shown. In that case, our revenues over expenditures, the change in the fund balance is a positive eighty-one thousand. The water balance, the change in the fund balance is a positive two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Most of the actual expenses all throughout the water fund are below the budgeted amounts. Um, one of our employees started working part-time. Dave came back to work in the spring so that we had our water superintendent, who had been only working a day every week or two, is now working five days. The Marina Fund shows a positive increase of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And the revenues are higher and the expenditures were substantially lower. The pays you throw is a change of about forty-five hundred. So as I was looking at the financials last night, those were the two pieces that really stuck out. The third component is in our budget statement, we have to provide you with a reserve amount. The reserve amount is calculated at two thousand nine hundred and six thousand about. That number was calculated as an extrapolation from July of expenses based upon a one point three million dollar deficit. That's the line that says twenty twenty-five year-to-date projections. Our fund balance at the end of the year, our reserve balance will be higher because we're still operating on a very conservative or a high deficit number of one point three million. Even without the revenues generated in the last week. We're still on the right side.
Was until which point you said?
So when we first did the budget, when we pulled it out of Cassell, it was May revenues because it was the July twenty-five books. So we closed the books in July. We ran our statement, our budget statement. When we run the books in July, that means that we were looking at May revenues. One of the things when I talk in, in my budget note, I've made some calculations based upon more accurate revenue numbers. And we'll get the more accurate expense numbers, the closer that we get once we finish the November books. We are not required until the end of January twenty twenty-six to submit the final budget, the certified copy of the budget to the department, to the division of local government. The other thing that's in the upcoming budget is that we have not yet received the final certification of values. In August, we received an estimate of assessed values for our property taxes. It doesn't impact us as much as some other municipalities because our property tax revenue is such a small part of our budget relative to general sales tax. And then on December fifteenth, the mill levy will be certified. So this budget must be adopted prior. I'm not asking for any change in the mill levy other than that what is allowed by law in the change of assessed value last year. And we have a statement that asks you to continue to assess at the maximum value allowed. I wanted to give the financial components of the statement as we consider the budget because it's important to understand that our September financial statements are the best numbers of the way that we have received and spent our money. The way that we've managed those expenses towards a budget of this year, which is the first for you that I've had this budget. I recognize that because of our push to get space to create built, the numbers are not as clean because we spent a lot more money than what we've made up until three days.
Thank God for three days ago. Excellent. I really appreciate.
So I don't know if that answered your specific questions, but I'll certainly open it up.
Yeah, I may just warn them straightened out because it's
and, and I, this memo, um, Nicole provided to me, um, during the meeting, so I didn't print that one. Um, but if anybody was like me to forward that to you, I'd be happy to use. Thank you, Nicole.
You're very welcome. I would just add a couple of things that when I review your financials, um, from my perspective, uh, I'm, I think the town should be very proud of the performance of what you budgeted in twenty twenty-five to your actuals at this point. I don't see that changing. It, it really exceeds what you projected in the the performance exceeds what was projected in twenty twenty-five, and I want to point that out. You've got a healthy cash position, which will help you meet future expenses. Um, also, town is really good about keeping only the amount of cash that is needed in the operating account, um, so that you can earn more interest on the funds that in the reserve accounts and in the, um, in those assets. The average interest rate for October on those color trust and C-Safe accounts is four point two six percent. So that also provides additional earnings for the town for future purposes, but it also helps to increase your financial stability and provide additional liquidity. So I just would like to point that out. I think you'll be very pleased when we get the November financials, we'll be able to put that three million dollars in there and every fund of the town will have a positive change in fund balance, which is excellent. So just wanted to give that little spiel.
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Steve on that? And I'm not, we'll move on.
Is this for the entire?
No, this, this was just the memo, financial review. Yeah.
That for this Cassell.
Hmm.
So did we, I'm still got gross wages for Grand Lake Center. Did we misbudget that?
In budget?
Yeah. We transferred.
We transferred employees out into marketing. So we moved Kade's budget out of the Grand Lake.
And what's our plan for marketing now?
Currently, we are working to execute a marketing plan for January of twenty twenty-six. I'll be coming to you with our proposal at the next meeting as to how we plan to spend the money, how we plan to manage the visitor center, and how we plan to engage our visitors and our locals of life. The dissolution of the chamber has been, um, posted to the membership. On December fifteenth is when all of those um, ballots need to come in. Um, depending upon that vote will depend upon how a transfer of assets would come to the town. Other than that, um, staff is focused on continuing to move forward with marketing the town using the, the base ideas that we have worked with, which is the tourism that comes here recognizes our unique position as well as the natural resources that bring people here.
Question. If the ballot comes back, you want to keep it, what, what is our commitment as funding the development?
We will do marketing and visitor center operations and, um, they would have to decide what to do with their assets and the Go Grand Lake website, but they don't have the ability to fund or manage.
So in the case of it not dissolving, billing lease and all that stuff.
It's a one-year lease.
Okay.
They don't have any run through, through that.
Okay.
We haven't entered into any negotiations with the Chamber Board. And I've not received any intention from the Chamber Board of their intent to continue to use the bill.
So since the decision is possibly being made, um, after last, last meeting of the year, how does that paint a picture for us?
So for us, the Chamber wants, the Chamber Board wants a resolution by the end of the year. They don't want to have to carry another fiscal year. For us, the only impact would be the way that we would receive or not receive their assets. Tents, chairs, tables, the website, the bank account.
People?
Um, it has already been communicated to the, um, three visitor center part-time employees that the intent of the town is to continue to have them be hired as part-time people under similar wages, similar hours, which is eighteen hours each. So we'll pay forty-eight hours. Um, and then the bookkeeper, um, took another job. And so she has given her notice and will be leaving at the end of the month to become the treasurer for the John and Grandma. We know her. She's also taken on, she's taken on the ice hockey tournament too. Which sold out, by the way, in forty-four seconds. And there's fifty-three teams on play. But I don't want to get too far off topic.
Yeah, let's stick to
Thanks, friends.
Eleven, uh, items of discussion, public hearing, twenty twenty-six budget.
Thank you, trustees. As specified in the twenty twenty-six budget calendar, we have, um, we're presenting the twenty-six budget for a public review. As you may have noticed, two weeks ago, I did an informal presentation of the budget. It was originally submitted formally to the board on August eighteenth. And the public workshops were held in September and October. Um, specifically, um, the date that it is referenced is, um, August twenty-fifth and October fourteenth. Um, this public hearing satisfies requirements of CRS section twenty-nine dash one dash one oh eight five. This is key part of our process to allow anybody from the public that would wish to speak and give input. Um, I'll let you know that I have not received any, um, email input on, um, the budget during the period of time. Um, I did receive some informal, which I passed along to you during the sessions. So you should open up the hearing to the public.
Oh, really?
And then, and then I ask if any members of the public wish to speak, and then when that is complete, you can close that and we can move on.
Okay, opening up the public hearing, uh, maybe I was of discussion on this to the public. I'm not hearing any, so I will close the public hearing. And now open it up to the board for discussion.
So that's it? That's just public?
That's it. Okay. So we're not going to discuss.
Oh, that's the blue bloods, so. Don't worry.
Why is this charge so slow?
This?
No, this. I mean, I had this plugged in for several hours, you know, granted from the online, but I only had forty-two percent.
Maybe the capacity of the
Madam Mayor, would you like me to make a few comments about the budget?
One second, please. We have
Okay.
We've got some background noise.
Okay.
Coming from somebody that might be on the phone or on Zoom. So if those of you that are on the phone or Zoom, if you could please check and make sure that you are muted at this time. Not hearing any other background. So Nicole, yes, please.
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. Um, I did prepare a budget memo, but it was not until this afternoon. So I'm not sure if that was able to be passed out to everyone.
Yes, I did hand out a copy to each that says twenty twenty-six budget memo. It's a one-page document.
Thank you so much, Steve. Um, so I wanted to, in order to facilitate a conversation this evening, I wanted to make sure that, um, we were notifying you of the amounts that were on that last discussion, the budget from the November tenth meeting. And then anything that we had changed while we present this current draft and hopefully final draft to you this evening. Um, so the, the memo will show there's a dozen changes to the budget, so that is not a lot. Um, and maybe we go through these one by one if you'd like. Um, sales tax is on line ten on the detailed budget. And that was increased by about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, mostly due to the fact that when we originally created the twenty-six budget, we just used the same number that we had in twenty twenty-five. And as the performance of the sales tax, um, as we saw that the sales tax revenues were actually higher than what we were expecting even in twenty twenty-five. Um, we were able to project that out a little bit more and maybe not be so conservative with twenty twenty-six. So the new number, we feel very confident about. Um, and then the other topic was, I believe, suggested by the Board of Trustees, increase in rent, um, for the property. For, so that changed that number from six thousand to fifteen thousand on line seventy-one. Next, there was line seventy-four, the sale of assets, um, increased by two thousand dollars to six thousand dollars in this new draft for the sale of the golf simulator and exercise bike. The next line is something that we can't, um, control really. It's whenever the general fund expenditures change, we have to do the three percent of general fund expenses for the taper reserve. So that is that number. Um, professional services increased, um, mostly for contract bookkeeper and treasurer services. The treasurer's fees is also a number that cannot be really adjusted because the county takes out two percent of whatever property taxes are collected. So as we slightly change the property taxes based on our calculation, that number changed just a little bit by eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. And that is on line one ninety-eight. Line one ninety-nine attainable housing was reduced by fifteen thousand. The new number there is three thousand dollars.
Those are the water taps on the Mary Drive property.
Thank you, Steve. And then on line three sixteen, the winter lights decreased five thousand. The new number is sixty thousand. Line four sixty, capital expenditures, new amount was reduced to ninety-seven thousand. Um, reduce the cost of the gym floor expense from seventy-five thousand to sixty thousand dollars and then remove the projects for the weight room in the amount of twelve thousand and twelve thousand for the cardio room was also removed.
There was still seven thousand in there for lighting, which wasn't
Yes.
From that fifty thousand dollar budget.
Yeah. Line four sixty-four for capital equipment, we removed the fifty-five thousand for the new water trucks. And so what's remaining is the snow maker for eighty thousand. Line four, four sixty-six for paving, added that in for twenty thousand dollars. And then finally, I found an error on the, uh, spreadsheet. The Marina Purchase Service subtotal was missing the formula. So that was sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. I wanted to point that out because that will impact a couple of our resolutions, I believe. Um, but all Um, but ultimately, what I would say in a nutshell is that on this version of the budget, uh, the revenues have been increased by two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the last budget that you worked with. And overall expenditures were decreased by twenty-seven thousand. Are there any questions on these changes?
Those last two figures that you mentioned, that was from the last meeting, is that correct, Nicole?
Yes, all of the, all of, all of, there's a column that'll show you like the November ten, tenth amounts. Um, so yeah, those are all from the last meeting that that was held for the budget discussion and then our changes today. Oh, you mean the increase and decrease, yes.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Yes, yes, pardon, I'm sorry, I wasn't following your question, but yes. So basically, since our last meeting, um, the revenues have increased two hundred and forty-five thousand in the budget and expenditures have decreased by twenty-seven thousand. And we feel very con- very confident about those numbers, so.
What was the paving project we just talked about?
We added twenty thousand in there for path work.
There's time for questions.
Yes, please.
Did we figure out the marijuana license stuff that we had? It was supposed to be three thousand for twenty twenty-five?
Yes, that was figured out, I think, prior to the November tenth meeting. Um, so we can look at that really quick if you'd like.
Then the licensure you know was two thousand dollars.
Yeah, I see it's correct now on the budget, but it wasn't ever in actuals before.
And the
Did you have that now?
Nicole has had conversations regarding estimates for the tax collection, right?
Yes, actually, I have contacted.
Certainly talking the license fees, we can see that on the estimations for twenty twenty-five, but you did confirm that you received the three thousand for twenty twenty-five. Um, any further discussions on rent for Will Park Hill?
Haven't had the discussions with them yet. But that is a revenue item, that's one of the things that we're pointing out. Just so I both agree that we need to charge.
And where did we land on rent for the Matthews property? See, we raised it to fifteen thousand budgeted for twenty twenty-six for both of those.
Um, we are, I have um estimated out to see what the cost for the Stanley House is. That'll be vacated at the end of the month. Um, once we understand what that is and some of it has gotten more expensive because there were handyman repairs like tile put into place over water lines that need to be repaired. Um, there, uh, this estimate currently is based upon increasing the cabin rent um to um increase the rent and to charge for gas. So that's what that fifteen thousand is coming in. Because currently, it was only five hundred, all utilities. So we pay for propane there currently. So we were gonna raise that to a thousand for that and the tenant would pay for the utilities. Um, one of the reasons to keep the person out there is because we just store a lot of summer, but.
Oh, yeah, we want to provide housing too. Uh, so what did, what did you say? We're at right a thousand dollars for the house and they
It was, it was five hundred for the cabin.
Which one's the cabin?
The cabin's the small one. So currently, the cabin has been paying five hundred with no, nothing else. And that's gonna go up to a thousand plus utilities. The house was only paying seven fifty, no utilities. I don't, I'd like to see that rented at fifteen hundred to two thousand. But if it comes back that it costs twenty-five thousand to fix it, that'll be a tough pass. We spent five thousand dollars on the cabin this week because the water pumps, where the water started leaking and the heater fans stopped working. And all of those were built prior to a building inspector looking at any of that stuff for, so for us, when we do the repairs, we're paying for lines and flues and all the stuff to make it appropriate. So it's that cost payoff that I'd like, uh, that once I get that estimate.
Yeah, I think that bathroom is something to pay too.
Yeah, there's, I don't, it could be more than ten thousand dollars. And if it's ten thousand and we can make twenty-five, you know, I think from long-term perspective, worth the investment, but I didn't want to see it thirty thousand. You know, it's like I talked to, to Logan, you know, five thousand dollars, that's what I collected in rent so far this, this year. So, yes, it's, it's satisfying the social need, but we also don't want it to cost too much, that it becomes an overt.
And marketing, so we're moving Katie out of the center and he's gonna do some marketing.
Currently, there is Katie, Ally is contracted, that's also in the budget.
Is that
That's the thirty-six thousand dollars that is under there for the professional services. That's a transfer over of her work. We also have um events manager. So Sarah's continuing to coordinate all of the events, including the town events and any other events that are either managed or rented through, for, for right now. So from a labor perspective, that is the dollars hundred and eighty thousand dollars in labor to manage, so twenty percent labor to manage the expenditures of the market. And that, that ROI return is part of the proposal and how that marketing along the social. Um, as you noticed in my report, we will be beginning state CTO social co-op for the winter time. Um, that'll be kicking off the first of the month.
So for all intents and purposes, Kay's taking over the marketing director role?
Correct.
Who's taking over Katie's role?
She is. There's two days a week that she has been working at the Grand Lake Center. And we can hire a part-time person to do that. And like we haven't hired that person yet, we haven't posted it. But it is in the budget.
So, we look at the same spot, I'm on line forty here, under marketing and events, personnel comes out to three hundred and fifty-four thousand. So based on outlining kind of the salaries that
That's the total with benefits.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what benefits?
So, yeah, the, just, it's just flat wages, the top line, girls' wages.
We're twenty-five.
Equal technically?
Two full-time.
Two full-time and Ally
She's separate from, she's down in professional service.
Two full-time and part-time is what's built into that over right now.
When are we posting the part-time Grand Lake Center person?
Once you guys approve the budget and I'm able to make decisions.
Makes sense.
Some days. I've, I've, I've pushed it offshore now. All the vote for have to wait until the fifteenth for that to we don't necessarily have to wait that, so the plans, but at the same time, the chamber still operates that under a contract until the end of the we haven't terminated that call.
What came of your investigations of the water wages?
Um, the water wages. We looked at what the actual wages were, which totaled up the three hundred and six thousand dollars. So we took actual wages for twenty twenty-five to three percent. The only thing that we configured is that those wages transferred over two years ago and they included all the benefits along with it and got recalculated through.
Wouldn't that come up in the audit?
Because they paid overtime because they didn't even work for a day or two.
Overtimes is separate line.
It should be, that's the only place that we were able to come up with those dollars. We didn't pay four people more than the actuals.
Well, the actuals for twenty twenty-four
Twenty-five.
No, I was
Right.
For twenty twenty-four actuals.
Right, that was the overtime.
Our, no, overtime is separate line.
I know, that's what we're looking at into. Um, we also do have, before we put the number in, part of our budget requirement is that we take the audited numbers and those are what'll be used for the budget. The audited numbers aren't in, on this budget yet, that'll be completed before we submit to the state. It mentioned, but in front of the um the actual budget, you will see a budget memo that I prepared, which does break down, and it looks like this. I emailed that. This is the one that I emailed to you this morning. It breaks down funds.
That's what would that be under?
It was emailed this morning.
Correct. Cassel Financial Statement, Word slash C's Financial Statement.
And let me find it. Was it in the packet?
I would just jump in and let you know that the audited financial statements for twenty twenty-four show wages for water of three hundred ninety-five thousand eight eighty in the regular wage category. Um, so.
Uh, not really a question, but more of just a statement. Um, Public Works, Public Works wages. Budgeted for twenty twenty-six is essentially six hundred and ten thousand. And we are effectively at that wage at the end of our total.
Correct.
So.
I anticipate, I anticipate that um there will be some wage adjustments for twenty twenty-six in, uh, in the director's role. And in an additional employee in overtime. Um, there are seven people on staff currently, including the mechanic, and we came from eight. And I believe we can work with seven.
One other thing in the public works.
Weren't we gonna add people, or are we doing contracted for
So the cleaning, we have, we're starting to collect, I've received two bids. We're planning to do an RFP for that.
So is the cleaning thing in this?
Not in an over, in the overall budget, because I don't have a number to put in.
Budget for twenty twenty-six on safety supplies for public works is seven grand. And I think we're twelve thousand.
Apparently, apparently, we have a lot of vests. We weren't gonna have to buy vest gloves, glasses. We, we're not gonna have to buy that safety equipment. We were gonna have to buy it in bulk, save a lot of money. It's, there's a lot. If you need any.
For the director role?
Yeah, we've received um two outside one-site application to date. It's um open until the end of the
They, I guess, going along those lines, we've got vehicle equipment maintenance lines in there that haven't changed much.
Right.
Um, budget twenty-six compared to this year.
Yeah.
Are we gonna be, does that need to be adjusted? We're likely gonna be sending more equipment out for field carries.
No, because we've been sending out more equipment for repairs just up until this summer. So for the first part of the year, we've been doing that. We took on the mechanic, but we'll continue to have the mechanic. We don't know if the capacity will be the same, but um, currently, like, the six forty has to go down for some, some line work, but anything other than the largest equipment right now is still being done in.
I would like to see an org chart. I feel like a lot of things are gonna be changing, public works, admin. What's the other thing we're just talking about, marketing?
It is. We, we're, we're adding an enterprise and, and another customer with, with marketing, so absolutely.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see a proposed planned trajectory org chart and, and include in there also these third-party vendors, uh, like Ally, like the cleaning people. Um, and anything else.
We have L T A, we have Air.
Yeah.
We have our financial support.
You, we can go on for days. Um, but it would be nice to kind of understand what that layout is and also how that relates back to the budget, because, you know.
Great.
Um, that'd be cool to see.
Good, uh, uh, good. That might be a segue, um. Just because I skipped it in the manager report, so I will just run back up to there. I, I presented a document up there that talked about some unbudgeted items that I wanted to ask you guys about to consider. Um, since we were able to take the budget from the three hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit to a hundred thousand dollar def- deficit, I put in a laundry list to spend some of that money. Um, over the last several months, I've been working with Nicole. Um, before Heike left, she um had been looking at other ERP systems to be able to manage our budget, financials and water. Um, in fact, she told me when she went to Keystone that Cassell would not be one of the ones on her shortlist. Um, as I continued to, to look through those, we um, we had some discussions here. We did, um, we took a look, um, Spring Rock was one of the smaller ones that came about, that actually fit within the government ERP space. There aren't a whole lot now with technologies, Open Gov, Cassell being the, the leaders. And um, I've been working with Open Gov for about forty days on capabilities, what our shortcomings are. Um, it's a whole lot more than it is kind of what you were talking about with org charts. Our current ERP system is very limited in what the output of the reports and the way that they're able to do it. Currently, Nicole spends hours just taking that seven-page and that thirty-seven-page report and manually transferring those into Excel spreadsheets to give you the other reports that you see that has pie charts and such, and it's still a headache to figure out industries. The newer ERP systems are hosted um on AWS servers. They're paid in subscription services so that updates and improvements are part of the process. Whether you buy it today, tomorrow, or in five years, you're always on the same product. But that means that you spend money all the time, whether you're surging or shrinking. The cost to implement something is not only inexpensive, it is also time-consuming. As a result, that the bid that I received has an implementation cost that is close to a hundred thousand dollars. We're currently paying less than twenty thousand dollars a year for our current system. The subscription costs The subscription costs are four times what we pay now. One of the evaluators told me you get what you pay for. And it does feel that way um. The questions that. You as a board are asking of me are all really reasonable. They're sometimes more challenging than what I would like them to be. Especially when it comes to the budget. The ability for staff to regularly provide input. Without it being manually updated, last year, Heike was able to do that with one department head. With the public works. But the reality was every time that a change was made in public works, it had to be made manually over into the budget. And what we learned is with Nicole and I is that those changes become very time consuming. Over the last eleven months, I have. A great amount of. Anticipation for the value of having that single touch all the time. Um, it's gonna be a pain in the butt, Nicole and I have talked about this several times. Um, she's always responsive. But that what if I just need, you know, there's hours and hours spent on on the two outputs that she prepared for you today. We started talking about it at nine AM just to do these two charts to give you context because we updated all the numbers last night. A new system would not only allow us to be able to do that, but also to be able to grow. And answer the the questions with full and complete confidence. And not telling you that we'll be updating um over the next couple of weeks. The other requests that are on that list are the twenty five thousand dollars that. Two years ago, we took the transportation dollars out of the budget. When we started this budget, we didn't know if we were gonna have transportation coming here, that number was sixty thousand dollars. We'll be able to get this done for under twenty five thousand. But because we haven't signed the contracts, it's not in the budget, I expect. A memorandum of understanding, if not in place close by the end of the year. The money has been committed, it's a matter of where the stops are gonna come. So we are gonna have bus service starting in May, it'll come here three days.
Since through the lives.
Yeah. It'll cost, it'll cost us less than twenty five thousand dollars for our share.
Is that just bus service return?
Yeah, so it'll be a free service and what it'll be doing would be circulating from Granby. To here to coincide with trips from Winter Park and with the training service that always started in November. Two days a week.
Did you?
The the other request is for. Uh, commitment, I don't know what the amount is. Um, the sheriff mentioned it would be about a third of what our nine one one contract is, which is about twenty six thousand dollars coming up this year. The sheriff department in Grand EMS, along with the county. Asked my mayor's managers and commissioners at last Monday's meeting. To consider staffing uh mental health. Services expert within Grand County EMS. That person would then be able to make. And attend mental health calls which increasingly take more and more time out of both EMS services. And the sheriff's office. Because of the time that it takes to complete those calls, to be able to provide care and services for those people that needed it sometimes several hours. I want to be able to bring these items to you, I wanted to give them all to you ahead of time, so. I'd like to come to you forward unless you tell me absolutely not with more discussion, I'm not bringing you contracts, but. Um, I I would like to bring in the G O S people next meeting. To give a presentation so you can see what I'm talking about.
Where do you go with those people following this, the new ERP?
Yeah, um, you have Open Gov, I'm not sorry, Open Gov, not Go.
You have any estimate as to what kind of possible time savings? You know, initial setup and everything would be rough.
So Nicole told me she spends a few hours regularly. Just back and forth with Cassell, um, she has it down to to an art, she makes the call and wait. I've heard people in this office sit on hold music for a very long time. That's that's.
I mean, I would imagine that without. Without knowing the new system right off the bat, that would be we'd be on hold for some of that stuff anyways. Questions and whatnot. Um, I guess my.
Thirty.
My question is more along the lines of like putting together the financials and.
Budget thirty thousand.
Um. Is what I think we'd say.
Is what I think the value, yeah. The real cost, eh, but I think it'll grow with us. What I see and. They asked, they asked me for a chart of accounts. So I asked them for a chart of accounts today. And they gave me thirty eight pages or thirty two pages.
Thirty two pages.
Thirty two pages. And it was.
Two.
They told me really ugly. So one of the discussions we had today was. If we did go with a new system, we probably should ax everything we have and start from scratch with the old system, just because. A lot of time is spent reversing the fixes of the past because you find them along the way. Um, the ballpark for the cost of. Um, G O S is similar to what the cost of Tyler would be. And what this cost, cost this spring birth would be. So they're in a similar space in terms of cost. Thank you, sir.
But I had one more like big question um.
We can go back to the budget.
Yeah, on the budget stuff. Um. Looking at twenty six's budget. In all departments, there's a medical benefit allowance line.
Yes.
And. Uh. If it one that actually was decent. So public works, this was very easy to find, that was a twenty six budget on that of eighty four hundred bucks.
Mm hmm.
Um, we're drastically high on. Every one of our departments this year.
It's twelve hundred bucks per full.
Is is that a change that we missed in the budgeting of twenty five or is that?
Mm hmm. It it should have extrapolated that, though the eighty four hundred is twelve hundred times seven.
Right, so um. I mean, I can go back into the twenty five budget real quick, but like I'm. Yeah.
Nicole, do you have?
Actuals.
The twenty twenty five budget is also eighty four hundred for that line.
Are you talking about like different departments?
Yeah, so if you go into the twenty twenty five actuals. But it's not.
Is this what your estimates you mean?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that that just, that's an extrapolating number unless you look at our financial.
Uh, the financials.
And it kind of varies depending from my understanding of what kind of expenses people or staff ask for reimbursement for. So it can fluctuate, is that correct, Steve?
Yeah.
If the actuals that.
Yeah, it's over here.
But those are matched benefits, I thought that.
That's what, so that's, there was my question, what what technically is medical benefit allowance? In this budget, is this what we are matching for them? Because there's, there's dental, there's health and dental employee. I mean, there's two lines for dental, like I I. It just seems like there's. There's some, something.
Can you explain the benefits to us line by line? Do that, do that.
Wait, well, well, now I got it.
Health, dental, employee, department, health, dental, medical benefits.
So.
So the line two sixty five would be the premiums for health and dental insurance for employees. Line two sixty six would be dependents, health and dental premiums. Um, because, yeah, I had a question about that at first too, I'm like, what does that stand for? But D E P is not department, it's for dependents. And then medical benefit allowance. From my understanding was reimbursements for out of pocket costs for employees. And, yeah, after that, I think you know the rest, unemployment, workers' comp, social security, all those are fixed, really, um, family.
So, I I guess my. Looking at the twenty six budget, all of the medical benefit allowances are relatively low. And looking at our twenty twenty five actuals toward the end of October. For instance, public works has. Uh, they had eighty four hundred for this year, but they're sitting at like almost sixteen grand. And I I was wondering, like, did that? Did some of. I don't know, like dental or something get rolled into that because. Dental's at like seventeen percent of the budget where. The medical benefit allowance is around two hundred percent.
Oh, so are you looking at the um financial statements, is that what you're comparing it to?
Yeah, the actuals that you just got.
Gotcha, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking at the budget pages and.
I'm.
I might have to.
Looking at both. I'm.
Okay.
My question is, is. All of the medical benefit allowance in the twenty six budget is the same effectively as what it was for the twenty five budget. And we're drastically over. On every one of our departments. Like I, I wanna stay to the tune of.
Let me do some research on that because um. Sometimes things are getting thrown into the wrong uh expense line. I think there was a. Yeah.
So.
Let me check on that and come back to you at the next meeting.
I just wanna make sure we don't need to like update.
And it, and it could be because we have paid out. A lot of benefits, but that gets reimbursed as well, so. Uh, so like our flex benefits, we've had a lot of people that have been out. That have taken time that would increase that number, but we'll find out why it's showing up.
But would that drop onto the medical allowance line or would it be?
No, it should be more work.
Correct, right? That's, which is what we'll, we'll have to find. Good.
I will definitely research that.
Thank you, Nicole. Marina fund revenues, Grand Lake Center revenues, um, I know we're budgeting here. Low revenues, high expenses, so we're. Just general budgeting purposes, I do wanna make sure that we're stressing growth there.
Yep.
Those are we keep adding. Adding things, but not increasing revenues.
We, correct, so we did not increase, so for the Grand Lake Center. We increased fees but did not increase revenue estimations.
Yeah.
Because we increased the fees because of demand and need. And we don't have a really good way of predicting it, but I, it. Again, I think that goes back to our, our ERP system that. To be able to have those real time numbers, hopefully we'll be able to make any adjustments as necessary.
I think I'm mostly talking about like performance goals around the revenue dollars for the specific funds, maybe we can. You know, just set some sort of something like this is obviously budget, this is what we're gearing towards, but also personally, I think we need to set some sort of performance so that they have something to. Guide them.
Correct.
Um, that was one and then.
The conversations both the Marina and the Grand Light Center were how could we set the prices to maximize the engagement?
Yeah.
Without getting the numbers right, yeah.
Adding services, I know we talked the last time about merchandise, like we're not selling anything.
Right.
Um, just different ways we can from a business standpoint make this more profitable.
Yeah.
Um, second item we talked about last time and I don't see it changed here, we're budgeting a hundred and thirty thousand for. Twenty twenty five for the space to create, we're not gonna make that in six months. So we gotta make sure that's adjusted for.
When you're streaming. I believe those figures were used from the analysis um.
Yeah, that one is full annual production, not.
But it it was reduced to just half of a year.
Yeah.
I I think we went over those numbers and that in front of sale.
I will double check, but I'm fairly certain that we use just six months.
Fifteen hundred for average. Times nine, yeah, that's that's fourteen thirteen thousand a month times six months.
It's not a hundred.
Not a hundred.
You got the industrial buildings at two forty.
Six million dollars.
We'll clean up those numbers on that side. Um, at at worst.
I think we, I think it was.
It'll just, it'll just clean up the number that there isn't that much profit.
Yeah, I just don't want us to be here next year like, what the heck are you doing?
Fair, thank you. We'll work those numbers through.
Appreciate it, but every, eh eh eh, everything else, I still wanna know more about this water fun thing, but everything else looks. Much better.
The only other one that I had questioned if we needed to technically fund is line. It's line one eighty eight for fifteen dash eight seventy. On the twenty six budget is lined in under marketing. But on the twenty five actuals that I've got, it's on just our administrative stuff labeled as administrative contingency. And for twenty six.
So the general admin contingency?
Yeah, we have nothing budgeted for twenty six and we're sitting at like fifty seven thousand right now this year. So for starters.
For general, the general admin contingency that's on line one eighty eight is supposed to be just for marketing.
Yeah, but in our twenty twenty five actuals. It's not labeled under marketing, we broke it out and put different pieces we can have in our game this year. So where are we, where did we drop like sixty thousand dollars on this year that we didn't budget for next year? Well, that's not true.
Not true.
Stink, okay, so let me just look at this, um, that was account number ten four one five eight seventy, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, let me check this out really quick. Antero Group is what I see in that for uh twenty twenty five. And it is for um like priorities. Stri- strategy, plan, organization. Is one of the items in there, affordable housing, planning.
Workshop, that wasn't granted, we, they did the.
Was under the Cassidy grant?
No, it was the one that wasn't.
Okay.
It was a twelve thousand dollar.
So. That's what, that's what is in there now, our payments for invoices to Antero Group. Probably, I don't know if that was, should be. Placed somewhere else, we can look at that.
Uh, I don't know that it needs to be placed anywhere else for this year, I'm just making sure it doesn't need.
It don't need for next year, yeah.
Punched in for next year somewhere. Cause it's, you know, we have a zero balance on the budget for next year, that's.
That wasn't planned, right.
Some of that going to the point of.
No, that's, this was an extra study that was put in them. No, it's seven thirty. It would be lined up in the middle of some time.
Yeah, that'd be appropriate.
Okay, how many pages of accounts do we have? It's very difficult to memorize all that. So but for. Antero, we do have that budgeted in line ninety. For twenty twenty-six for um Antero Group and airs for seventy-five thousand. So I think we're covered there.
But take it out of the board and put it in. And putting it into the funding commission is not for that.
It's a planning, yeah.
Even training and travel. Pardon me?
That's the training for the planning.
Yeah.
For the planner.
Yes. Yes, our plan. No last questions.
Um.
You don't have any more? That was that's a good.
Line number seventy-five uh covers fifty thousand dollars in grants. Um, their general fund.
Yeah.
Anything specific that is for?
No, we had budgeted for a GOCO grant. For possibly. For the Grand Lake Center. That's what that's.
That's the match percent.
Because we have fifty thousand dollars in eighty twenty projected. Or improvements, you know, the space to create.
At this part?
Yeah.
And we've. Separated out. When we build this thing. Next year. What to have grand lakes and not be like lumped in there with other things.
Yeah, like the Grand Lake Center to make the Grand Lake Center.
Where is the lump yet?
In in revenues. It's under charges for services.
Full line.
So go to general fund revenues.
Yeah.
I I I have to probably give it into because I'm going to do this one. But. Um, but it would be lines staying with me. We're almost there, guys.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, it's line forty-eight through fifty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Be really cool. We can just have like we treat.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
At least just having it separated out.
So basically. Block off the three fifties.
I don't know, just Grand Lake Center.
Does everything above that is three forty-one and everything below that's three fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This.
Yep.
And I think we also put into Grand Lake Center expenditures. The summer camp.
Yeah.
So whatever that is. I think that makes more sense lumped into the like where we put. Our chamber funding and our trail rumors funding. That really shouldn't come out of Grand Lake Center.
It's it's in that. I like that because I I. They want to do more. So we're gonna have to kind of get a plan about what they want to do more and how we can put that through.
Yeah, that's one of the big ones that I have to break all this out on my own, you know, cheap course. It was really hard to say, it's gonna be Grand Lake Centers near this Grand Lake Center spends this. Um.
They said we used our municipal job this year. Is that correct?
Hang on.
What was happening there?
We pay her to be under taken.
Oh, we're taking her, okay.
But we haven't done anything.
We also have. A judge, um. Administrative hearing officer. Which he gets paid.
That.
That's John.
John.
And then Natasha's the other one.
Then then we initially bring that uh component in for one person?
That's why we had to have that administrative here. No, because that person, you have to have the judge to have.
He's the sheriff, he's the judge.
Yeah.
It's getting so high. Um, okay. Yeah, I don't know. Lost mine.
No, we'll run those three once we're reviewing the budget. And then the next part is a process. So the the approval of resolutions. Once the discussion of the budget. Then we'll move into.
B C D.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, those are, I have no more questions, but I. Still need a couple handles for others.
Yeah, um. Great. Others that relate to this or other issues?
The the questions I asked that we said.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I got those.
Um, and.
Yeah, I'll be good soon.
I'm done with questions on the budget.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll move on to me if not.
Questioned out, thank you.
Okay. The consideration to approve resolution fifty dash twenty-five.
No, thank you trustees. This one starts out, it is the first resolution. Which is a resolution to spend certain amount of. Fees summarizing the expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting budget for the town of Grand Lake, Colorado for the calendar year. Beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-six and ending on the last day of December. Um. I I was told to. Update last year's. I cancelled. These are the ones that you don't make new ones. Other than. Putting in the dollars. Those are the dollars that come from. The budgetist person.
Questions about this?
I'll make sure I'm looking at like the right pages for those.
One oh three, one oh two.
See a resolution.
Fifty starts out with a one page. One oh one is just the one page. So the first one appropriates. Money. Through the budget process. The second one details what the money is. And the third one accepts the evaluations by the successor. Deliver property taxes based upon them.
I'm not hearing any questions. Basically some more time or. To make motion.
You and Nicole tied them all up. I sent it to her. Okay. Right, Nicole, you tied them all up? Was the question?
The only um change I will have is on the next resolution because of the subtotal. Not calculating on the Marina budget, but this this. Resolution fifty dash twenty twenty-five looks good.
Okay.
Anyone's motion or question, please? Question or motion, please?
Uh, move to approve of resolution. Fifty dash twenty twenty-five. Summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting budget for the town of Grand Lake, Colorado for the calendar year, beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-six and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Have a motion. And a second.
Awesome, yeah.
Thank you. Please hold the board.
Trustee Mills.
Hi.
Trustee Kazo.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Arson.
Hi.
Mayor Bojumsova.
Hi.
Member Quest. Hi, thank you, motion passed this. Move on to see consideration to approve resolution fifty-one dash twenty twenty-five.
Nicole, did you want to make a call out on this?
Yes, absolutely. So in this resolution, we're breaking out the different um appropriations for each fund. And I would just would like to ask for a slight edit to the amount under Marine. Marina Enterprise Fund, the current operating expense number should actually be. Four hundred seven thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars. And when you add that to the capital outlay, the capital outlay number is correct at eighty-nine thousand two fifty. But then the total Marina Enterprise Fund expenditure should be. Four hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars. Thank you.
Question for caller manager Kujan on this one?
I support the changes recommended by our treasurer.
Move to approve resolution number fifty-one twenty twenty-five, a resolution appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts. And for the purposes as set forth below to the town of Grand Lake right over the twenty twenty-six budget year. With the amended. Numbers from.
Made by our treasurer for under the Marina fund.
Correct, the under operating expenses. Yep.
And a motion.
I'll second that.
And the second is told the board.
Trustee Kazo. Hi. Trustee Mills.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Arson.
Hi.
Mayor Bojumsova.
Hi.
Member Quest.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Passes. Moving on to the D consideration of resolution fifty-two dash twenty twenty-five. Nicole or. Manager Kujan.
This particular one helps defray the. The cost of government, um. This specifically is. By levying. Taxes set forth in property taxes. The amount of money necessary to balance the budget is seven hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred and six dollars. And the preliminary assessment for the town of Grand Lake is eighty-four million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and ten dollars. That the purpose of meeting all the general operating expenses is hereby levying a tax of nine point four oh nine mils upon each dollar total valuation of the. Assessment to offset the cost. For the year twenty twenty-six, that should be corrected. And that the town manager be authorized and directed to certify to the county commissioners who may levy's for the town.
I think we do levy the tax in twenty twenty-five for collection during twenty twenty-six.
So that number's right?
I think that year is correct on section one there.
Yeah. That makes sense.
So this, to be clear here, is the most one I wasn't too sure on. We are looking to raise our nose? No, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
We raised them to this number last year, so we'll keep them at this and. The dollar is calculated based upon that August assessment. That's okay.
Vision two.
Right.
So we are capped out somewhere with the fire department has entered that, correct?
Right.
We're hoping that only has to do that. Somehow. Somehow legally, like when you pass that initial levy, you have to collect the call first year. And years beyond that can. You can.
You can make those. Our auditor said for fifteen years that. That's leaving a lot of money. Really makes sense.
Last year we raised it up. It just hadn't been raised for years for those.
Any other questions? Moving on to action?
Dirty puppy. Yeah. Yeah, we, yeah. Move to approve resolution number fifty-two. Twenty twenty-five. Revolution levying profit to taxes for the tax year of twenty twenty-six to help to pray the cost of government for the town of Grand Lake, Colorado for the. Twenty twenty-six budget year.
Motion man second.
Awesome.
Thank you. Please tell the board.
Trustee Mills.
Mary.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Arson.
Hi.
Trustee Kazo. Hi. Mayor Bojumsova. All right. Member Quest.
Hi. Hey, here we go. Last one, consideration to approve resolution fifty-three dash twenty twenty-five.
Trustees, as mentioned in our budget discussion. Um. The fees that collect our taxes must be adopted on a yearly basis or as needed for changes. Highlighted in yellow are the specific changes that are being made. The business licenses are going up both fixed. Fixed with business, non-fixed transient and animal thrown. The purpose of that, those fee increases. Is to offset the cost of operations of the Grand Lake Visitor Center. The cost updating the fees for the Grand Lake Center. Include the daily drop-in rate. Um, it does include guest of members. Um, people that come in and guests, they're dropping in. Um, we've added um the monthly non-member class facility fee, which is collected. Typically during punch cards by instructors. Um, then that is paid back into town. We've added uh monthly walking track use as well as a rehab membership. Typically thirty to sixty days is what somebody that comes in for rehab does. Then they do it ten to twenty minutes, once or twice a day. So it's the same stuff over and over again. Um, we did show program ending on the golf simulators just when we said we were gonna sell it. Seems that everybody wants to come in and use it. It's probably just the time of the year. So we'll make sure that we get rid of it, but we'll collect as much money as we can until the grass is. The Marina fees. Um. The lake tour changes, the boat changes haven't been made in several years. Um, the demand is very high. Um, oftentimes we have waiting lists for several of our tours. Um, the capacity to have more tours is limited currently now by our resources. Um, so it's been recommended that those fees increase. Um. And the pedal boats. It's kind of interesting because the the pedal boats, what we tried to do is look at the cost of experience per person. So what we were trying to do was to target a twenty dollar per hour cost of experience per person. So when you start looking at these numbers going up, it's how many people are typically in the boat at a time. So that's kind of where we kept the numbers. And then finally, for the private fireworks viewing. the reality is it's just for the Fourth of July. Because it's too cold the other two times and we get a little bit of money on both Memorial Day and Constitution, but nothing like what we do on the Fourth. The private fireworks viewing, it allows our capacity to have four to six hundred dollars on some of these boats. But we do keep two people there from six o'clock until the end of the fireworks that are watching, maintaining, they're supporting, providing service and friendliness to all of the people who have best seats announced. We could probably double it if we wanted to, but this is a number that will keep our boats filled and people will love the experience. Those are recommendations made by staff.
Questions for manager Kujron?
The just, I don't know if I completely blanked that. Did you go over the business license portion?
Yeah. So we increased on.
I had, I had it for like a day and a half, so.
What I did was we calculated those three eighteen hour people. Right? And it's about fifty one thousand plus maintenance costs to keep the visitor center open. By increasing these numbers, we did a calculation based upon how many fixed business licenses. And then we averaged out.
Did this go along with the discussion we had two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Where exactly? Is it actually half price if you purchase between January and end of June? Or do you pay half?
You only pay half because our licenses start in July.
So it's three sixty for the year?
Yeah. So in July, you get a new one. But if you want one in June or in January to June, we only charge you half because we charge you full again in July. It's just like those numbers we're getting.
Some owners like to wait, what, about six months though to pay? So they don't have to pay the full price is the problem that I run into. So it's something.
Wait, explain that to me.
Some business owners rather than renewing when they're supposed to, they will wait till December when that half rate kicks in. Then they'll work. And it's only certain ones. They're very expensive.
It is, it's
It goes away.
It's something else to gene break, but.
You're not backdate. It seems like a backdate.
We should do for short-term rent. I sense it's.
Are you charging a late fee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have. I have to always ask those. If any of your businesses was lost, yeah. So most people have a problem on it, but there are.
I make a motion to backdate.
Certain people. We also have.
About a second, second.
We also have one or two that just don't care. One or two.
There are very many. It seems like we have an issue with people paying fees.
Nobody likes.
We have a judge.
You got a judge?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I entertain action on this, please.
Find the right aid. Before you get too into it, based on these new Marina prices, you suspect a certain increase in revenues? Or similar to how we talked about the Grand Lake Center where it stays flat?
I expect the numbers to go up. I'd love to see a five hundred thousand dollar year. We're getting damn close, James. That's, that's a big number and then you can't ever go back.
Would you like to change the reservation system?
You know, the first come, first served is unique.
Yeah.
And it really provides an opportunity. And Reed is pretty good about give me your name and I'll call you if somebody cancels. So he typically has a page of people to call every day. And if somebody does cancel, he's calling them. So that works better than the reservations when people don't show up. One of the things we talked about and I don't know what you guys would think about it is, you know, right now we take tour boat reservations. Just take your name, right? It's based on fifteen, sixteen people going up. If it starts to get cloudy or cold, people don't show up. When you think about charging them positive, we charge forty bucks, then we charge five or ten. Then if you don't show up, at least we got five bucks. It isn't as easy to fill those seats. He still keeps a list on those, but you know, that's kind of like, hey, you got ten minutes. Can't be here. That was, they're not huge numbers.
None of your wedding.
Yeah.
Right.
They're not huge numbers, but we did talk about that and it goes to that experience. I mean, do we want to be that? Do we need to be that? Yeah.
What do you think about the spots somebody else sort of wanted?
Correct.
Golf simulator annual unlimited. Do we have people with that right now for them?
Yeah. That's, they only get it for half a year. No, it's not what it was.
So we are keeping said golf simulator until June first?
Yep, I'll take that for six months. We, we had five people use it on Friday. So when I went in Monday, just saying, when do you want to get rid of it? I know. They're talking about it at the, you know, the pickleballers are talking.
Oh, it was the topic the other night in the safe.
I was gonna say.
You can take the simulator away? I'm like, nobody uses it.
Which one is it? Who is it?
That happened to me a couple of weekends ago when I went in. I was leaving and I got jumped by all the golfers.
So, so we're comfortable doing it in May. We'll give them one more winner.
The, the golfers.
They can buy it if they want. We're, we're pitching.
This would be a great revenue.
Hey, every two sixty. You want to put your name on for the whole thing? Could have it.
Year. At five thousand dollars, there's how many years of revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, entertain action, please.
I, where? There, we're not, we don't have motions on our, on our document.
Resolution fifty three twenty twenty five, resolution setting certain fees and deposits.
Thank you, trustee Arson.
Sorry.
Please hold the board.
Trustee Cassel?
Aye.
Trustee Mills? Trustee Arson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Soban?
Aye.
Mayor Burquist?
Aye. Thank you for everything. Nicole?
Thank you, Nicole.
Here's your time.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
I told Stephanie, you get to own it.
We're gonna give her five minutes.
You can blame me. You can blame me.
Well, thank you all very much and really appreciate all the board and staff, all of this hard work this year. Moving on to F. Consideration to approve a severance agreement with Matthew Reed to win it.
At the end of the month, the town separated employment with Mr. Reed. Yeah, it's still on the phone. We had intended to bring to you this agreement at the previous meeting, but there were a few items that were not completed. As a result, there was a doctor's appointment that was missed, but we have had the opportunity both with the town attorney as well as myself and Matt to be able to go over the documents, the document that you received in the packet, still receive a, a change that was taken care of to date. I, I will pass this out. I didn't make a number of items. What we are is we are taking out any reference to COBRA, which was an intent by the town to be able to provide coordinated benefits after the severance period. It's not mass intention to do that and it caused some confusion in the reading of the contract, so we just removed it.
What is COBRA's?
It is, it's coordination of benefits are a C O B R A, which is an acronym that when you leave, you get to pay for insurance so that you're not just stuck out on the street. COBRA, but you, as the employee, you pay for it. So you get to stay on for up to a year. It's not cheap. All right. So Matt and I talked, isn't they'll, they'll have insurance out.
So it's.
It doesn't need to stand there.
Okay.
It's typically what's given at.
Generation so that you don't, or you're not left without insurance or companies, businesses do that.
So from what was on the packet, the two documents that are here for any of your review, which Matt has received copies, one of them is the red line, which just takes out that clause. So this, this shows what was taken out of what's in the board packet, which is the one line at the bottom.
And this we've discussed today, is that what I understand?
Matt and I discussed this yesterday. Matt, do you have any comments?
No, that's exactly right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we discussed this afternoon. The, the COBRA is good for eighteen months. And it's thirty three hundred and seventy six dollars a month.
He's not planning to take advantage of that benefit.
Yeah, that's not in the wheelhouse.
Is that for the full family? Yeah.
Yeah, full family for thirty three seventy six a month.
That's set by our insurance card.
Yes, sir. I thought COBRA was like one of our third-party vendors or something. So it's very.
Yeah. Just me. Anyone have a question?
Discussion? Questions?
So this is, read up on my book.
Part of our conversations about this package was the steed drawing and other events.
Volunteering is not a part of, it's not a part of this contract.
It's not a part of the conversation and I don't see the emotional there, so.
There aren't any conditions that Matt has to do anything else.
I move to approve a severance agreement with Matthew Reed compliment.
Sir?
Please hold the board, sorry. Trustee Arson?
Aye.
See yourself?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Soban?
Aye.
Mayor Burquist?
Name.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda. Cemetery. Consideration of resolution forty nine dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, should be tuned on after you guys. On October twenty ninth, the Grand Lake Cemetery Committee and I met for our end of season follow-up tribute to twenty twenty five summer season operations activities and maintenance of the Grand Lake Cemetery. Per seventh meeting, we assessed completed work, identified areas for improvement, and discussed planning for the upcoming year. During this meeting, the committee also discussed proposed updates to the Grand Lake Cemetery rules and regulations to provide additional clarification for the public. The proposed updates include, number one, the pre-planning not allowed. Grave plots cannot be reserved in advance. A plot can only, may only be assigned for an individual due to the scene at the time of reservation. And another clause for burials that state families are allowed to be present during the excavation process. However, they must remain a safe distance of at least thirty feet from the burial site during traditional burial excavations to ensure safety. These updates more clearly align the regulations with current practices and are intended to provide consistent administration and improve public understanding. Do you guys have any questions, honey?
You can't reserve a spot.
I had to go there.
Yeah, I did. I mean, I'll see the grave stone up there, but you can't do it till you die. You can't do it.
In a family, so when one person passes, another can be reserved at that time for their spouse. So, so you can do two with one, but you can't just do two and move in. And we continue to work on making that as, as clean of a process. And with one this year, it, it was really good that our committee was able to support the staff decision. We're all on the same page. And while it's a difficult decision sometimes to communicate, there was understanding.
Okay. Well, you had to ask.
Has anybody observed them and then not used them?
Yeah. Absolutely.
And there's something didn't die or?
Well, here's your perfect example is that since there was some pre-planning allowed in certain people that wasn't supposed to happen. And I had been sending out letters, trying to get a whole family members asking, when are we expecting to bury these people? And I mean, one of them was already buried. He died like two years ago and was buried in California. So I ended up refunding him their money. So I think that was right for us. Keep that. So, yeah.
This, the amount of space, it's not going to grow, so. It could also.
Oh, don't that.
How about what?
People buy a spot and then they don't get buried. They're middle smokes. I mean, for good or?
Well, in, in these situations, it was, it was their wish to be buried there. And then when they died, the family chose, yeah, for them to go somewhere else. So it's, it's unfortunate, but it does happen.
I'm working with the family right now. Yeah, I'm working with the family right now. We have, we paid like sixty five thousand dollars for a family plot somewhere down on the front range and they don't want it. Then they won't allow the sale it or do anything with it. They want it up here so bad. So they're trying to find out where we can.
Well, sir, if there's a lot, they should go home. Short-term rental.
That's a volunteer.
Okay. I would entertain action on this item before it gets done. And.
I move to approve resolution forty nine twenty five, adopting updates to the Grand Lake Cemetery rules and regulations as presented.
Motion man second.
I have a question. Are there any grandfather scenarios for this?
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not post that. Exactly. That might have been promised in brief.
It does involve the name on all those files and, yeah, we're good to go.
Will you also?
Man, I'm second. Yes, second. And please hold the board.
Okay, trustee Arson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Cassel?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Soban?
Aye.
Mayor Burquist?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, future items for consideration.
We will be bringing you the request for musicals to be held and use of the community house. One of the things that will come along with that are the benefits received from the improvements that have already been made as well as the experts on the technical machinery there that we might be able to have help so people don't break it. We'll also be bringing a further discussion with open up to you and expect a couple of planning items, notes from your side.
Yes.
First is appointment by statute. We'll also call to.
I requested the portal crossing breakdown of.
I have not received the complete, what I received. What I received from him was the breakdown of the expenses in twenty twenty-five, not the complete project. He sent me the extra expenses. He didn't send me the complete expenses, so I'm still waiting on that.
You kind of had a good running one for space and creating.
Yep.
Saw that, suddenly he's back, I went, yeah, you did that a bit. And then after that, like to see the loose feeling.
Yep, you should have that payout. Or you add that next year. I want to get that all paid. Excuse me.
Anything else for? Myself or? Well, I will entertain one more item.
Move to adjourned, nice meeting.
Please call the board, Tom, there.
Alright.
Checks are available for signature.